All right, welcome to the Edna Township Board of Trustees regular meeting. This Tuesday, April 5th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. I call the meeting to order. Mr. Johnson, invocation please.
My pleasure. That's a thing. Your work, thank you for this day and thank you for Edna Township and its citizens here. I pray you be with us as we go through today's, tonight's session and that you help us get through it without too much arguing and so forth. I pray you should be with those who protect our country. We thank you for giving our freedoms here that we have and you and those families as timeless loved ones while they're away. Amen.
Just call me to pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. McKee?
All right. I move to adopt the agenda as presented. Is there a second?
I want to amend it.
You want to move to amend it?
Yeah.
Okay, what's your motion?
I want to add something to it and I want to be, I want to remove the county champions off there.
New business, do anyone approve that?
Okay, and then I want to, that's under new business. Okay, and then under old business, I want to do, add trustee assignments.
Add trustee assignments.
Yes, add assignments.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Johnson seconds, discussion. Let's say, I would just ask, I mean, I'm bored, but if you want to know the agendas, I'd prefer to do it where the public knows what we're discussing, but that's fine.
Yeah, but it's fine. I mean, it happens sometimes. Why you get it?
Just saying for transparency and for people to come, but any other discussion? No. Roll call on the amendment.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Okay, then, motion to adopt the agenda as amended. Second? Ms. McKee, seconds, discussions. Roll call, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
All right. I will move to adopt the meeting minutes for February 15th, March 1st, and March 7th as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion? Has everybody had the chance to review these minutes?
Yes.
No other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Those are adopted. Public comments, limited to five minutes per person. These public comments are open to agenda items and any other township business. Please state your name and address from the person.
Hi, I'm at 64 Gala Avenue in Edna, Ohio. Well, once again, we're here and as promised, I'm going to ask some questions this time because I'm not shy. Okay? First of all, I want to thank the sheriff for increased police patrol on Orchard Glen. Outstanding and we sure appreciate that. That was one of the campaign promises that last September, I have two of you on my front porch, it's whom the rotation, I appreciate it. Next item, let's talk about some of these, yeah, trustee assignments. Got some questions for Mr. Johnson and Ms. McKee, please. Can you tell me what exactly are your assignments that you're doing? What, you know, what are the duties that you have under your jurisdiction? I'd like to know personally. So, okay, well, I do the, I'm the safety person for the township, so I do the, oversee the drug testing. Drug testing of what?
Of the CDLs, the CDLs. Or the CDLs, you have a comprehensive plan for that.
Right, understood.
So I oversee that. I do the, I do the zoning commission and zoning appeals board. I'm on the fire board, I represent the fire board. What else? I think that's pretty much it for the most part.
So that's, my understanding, Mr. Johnson, that's what, four items?
There was a whole list that we did earlier in the year, I know.
Right, I mean, that are under your jurisdiction, those four items that you mentioned just now.
Yeah.
Well, just to let you know, they're all even.
Well, that's.
Maybe one extra or one person.
Okay, well, that's why I'm asking, Ms. McKee, because, you know, that's not, okay, but anyway, can you tell me, please?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Okay, I got parks, cemetery. I also, I'm on a Morpsey board.
On what board?
Morpsey.
Okay.
Okay, okay. That's a big deal because I'm, that's there probably two times a week downtown Columbus.
Okay.
And that's another board that I oversee.
Okay.
And also parks, mansion, cemetery.
Okay. So I, that's.
And then now I have the sewer, water and sewer part of it, which I just got a couple weeks ago.
All right, so I, you know, as you indicated that I see some puzzling books.
Puzzling books from who?
Well, I, I'm not, I'm not here to judge.
Well, you just, I'm just asking. You said you see some puzzling.
One of the trustees had a puzzling book on their face.
Okay.
And what I'm wondering is, you know, we, you know, we're always hearing that, you know, Mr. Evans has a lot of work to do, he's working, and I know for a fact he's working endless hours. I'm just wondering if the same effort and time is being put in by you two as well? I mean, I think that's a fair question. I mean, I literally see Mark answering people's questions, doing other items, doing job duties, coming to people's houses. I don't see a time limit on anything that he's doing. I mean, as far as 24/7. I mean, does your duties encompass all of that same amount of work?
I just told you.
They do. Okay? Well, you know, like I say, I notice as observing, you know, in meetings I've attended, that you're still not working very well together. And, you know, that's not fair. And like I say, one of the things you told me on my front porch in September, and I'm going to quote you, "I will work with Mark and the trustees 24/7, make sure everything runs smoothly." I haven't seen that.
I didn't, I didn't, I'm working with my board members, we're working together. We may not agree with the same thing, that's probably what you're talking about, that's not agreeing, and that's going to happen.
Right.
Okay, I'm not a rubber stamp, I don't hate anybody.
Right.
But I will work with all of my board members.
But you should be able to compromise.
Well, that's what we have been doing.
Well, all right.
That's what we have been.
You've compromised, then why don't we have agreement on the comprehensive plan?
Well, that's things we have.
Wait a minute, I used to say you compromised.
No, wait, hold on. You, listen, we have to work together to make things happen, but it's not going to happen overnight. It takes time, okay? So we're working towards that, okay? Stacking an agenda, see, I think that's some of the problem, we have a stacked agenda. We have meetings monthly or twice a month, you don't have to put them all on one meeting, you can do some this meeting and do some on the next meeting. I'm sorry?
Don't you all agree on your agenda?
Not always, like you just see me amend it today. So that gives you opportunity to, I mean, you know, to come in and amend the agenda, but there's always something said when you do, okay? So it's not as easy as you think it is.
I, I. But again, that's why we elected you.
Exactly, and that's why I'm here. I'm speaking, I'm communicating with you. Thank you.
Ohio?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Name and address. Alicia Zucker, 79 Trail East, Edna, Ohio. I live a couple of trails down the street from Mrs. Julie 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 Varian, and I've lived in Edna for approximately 10 years. In December of 2021, I have submitted my resignation to the zoning board and it should be on file with the township, if you're aware of it. My experience with zoning related to my position as a Columbus police officer in South Linden, I work with zoning officers out there, North Central Area Commission, South Linden Area Commission, doesn't matter, Greater Linden Business Network, so working in zoning area. I'm also actively and participative with God's Haichi Health Center. From midsummer of 2021 until the trustee election was over in November of 2021, Julie Varian, also known as Julie Julie Julie, who lives at 55 Trail East, she's my neighbor, was quite vocal on Facebook, and it was for you, Mark, in support of you. And Julie Julie was constantly promoting you, and she would support you on Facebook and appeared to be a friend to you. When my neighbors and I shared it with each other, and we did, we saw that regardless of her leftist views and things like that, we think that it's okay to speak about things as long as you own them, okay? Later, last year, I was able to return her daughter's credit card to a neighbor of hers and give it to her. Bottom line is, regardless of how she feels about the police or whatever, fine, I'm glad you got your property back, but you do have a relationship with her. And she donated money to your campaign based on the board of elections. My husband supported John Carlisle, Julie 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 supported you. This America, anybody can do that if they want to. But after the election in November of 2021, she changed her Facebook page, she started doing all the things, removing, and I mean scrubbing it. Now, ask me why I paid attention to that. Probably because around October, without ever knowing me or speaking to me, she accused me of, I think the words were stealing coppers. I don't know her, I didn't steal any coppers, it was ridiculous, but it was kind of negative
Stealing what?
Never mind. It, coppers, money.
Oh.
It doesn't matter, you can't make those kinds of statements. The problem I have here is that your unprofessionalism, you just carry it too far, you're so, I don't know, you're just so argumentative. You get on Facebook and you spend an inordinate amount of time. What I want to know is, since Julie 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 made those remarks on Facebook, and believe me when I tell you, I have them, okay? And the comments and all the remarks, I would like to know if she recused herself or told everybody that during her interview, when you gave her the position, that that happened. She had a fiduciary responsibility to tell the board. Was that ever done? I'm asking. Did the board ever, during your interview?
Do you want me to respond? Wait till you're?
I'm asking really, I'm asking.
So you don't want to hear what's, okay.
Not right now. Jeff Johnson, McKee, you had an interview. Did he ever admit to you that he knew her?
Not that I'm aware, no, not at all.
Did he ever accuse himself from doing that?
No.
So you hired unknowingly. I mean, you wouldn't know that she donated to his campaign, and you wouldn't know that she works for a publishing company, actually, JBA Campaigns, and they provide campaign strategies. I'm sure this insight would have been a big help to your campaign, Mr. Evans. And whether it was or not, my first of several public records requests will be if you in fact, in writing, never saw or knew that she was donating to his campaign and that they had friendship on Facebook. The second thing I'd like to know is, you are expending time and money to train her. Are you kidding me? Isn't there somebody else that could have provided a job to that didn't, wasn't a relation, didn't have friendship with? It's unprofessional, it looks bad to me, it looks bad. Ethically, I think that the citizens here have a right to know that. I mean, and you should be transparent and honest.
Time's up, please. And I'd like to address some of your.
If I can't address you, sir.
No, you're limited to five minutes, please.
He can, he can.
I can respond.
He can yield it to me.
No, we're not doing that.
Oh, we're not? How come?
Correct. I, I respond.
Why can't you, why can't you yield your time?
Ma'am, we're limited to five minutes, we have a large crowd here. If you would like to discuss it afterwards, you can, but I'm trying to move forward. However, I am going to address a couple of your issues during our interview, I did not realize she donated $50. A lot of people donated to me, and it's not like I see Mr. Hagee back there that donated $500 or $1,000.
That's not relevant.
Mr. Carlisle that he was appointed, you did not speak up about that.
That's.
Your husband was, didn't he create that referendum, that PAC against the referendum?
I did, no.
Yeah, you're in the wrong. I'm just saying that you were silent about the improprieties of the past board and you want to criticize now, there's nothing improper.
There's nothing improper to last word, that's due to you.
Ma'am, there's nothing improper, I did.
Yes, I believe there is.
Next was, so I can't yield my time? No, that's not allowed.
Hi, I'm Roger Diggle Barrett, I live at 533 Bowman Road, already downtown Port Huron. And tonight you're going to dole out some CARES money from the CARES Act of last year, and I'm just here to let everybody know that there was not a Republican in this state who voted for that money. Not Senator Portman, not Representative Balder-oh, Balderson. That money comes strictly from the Democrats. Keep that in mind, and if it passes into your neighborhood. The other thing that I know is going to come up later on will be discord. I'm a Democrat, been a Democrat forever. I voted for you two Republicans to clean up City Hall, so to speak. I voted out a Me Too Republican to the, to the would-be dictator who supposedly was a Democrat. I did not vote hoping that we'd get another dictator in his place, and I'm here to tell you that Jeff needs to be the head of this board because he understands this township up and down, frontwards and backwards. And you both need to listen to Ms. McKee because of her experience in government downtown.
Do you guys want to respond? I, I'd just like a quick response there. I am trying to affect the change we need, trying to do things properly. I've uncovered a lot of improper actions. Mr. Johnson falsely attested at receiving information from our former fiscal officer against ORC. That's been turned into the auditor. I totally disagree with you on there. Everything on this agenda, except three things, I've placed on here because it's needed. There's a lot more. We're not following the law in a lot of respects, and I'm trying to get us there. There's current investigations with the special investigative unit at the auditor about the asset propriety that some board members want to excuse, so I'm doing what I was elected to do. Next speaker, please.
Ladies first.
Yeah, you could have gone crazy if I don't give the phone. Okay. My name is Sarah Ferguson at 43 Bowman Road. So I understand the need to get things, certain things, proprietary things done, but I would like to see concessions and compromises made on all sides for a cohesive and well-running township. I think it's good to have differences and personalities, and those can be the most effective ways to work together because it balances out the driven with reserved, but I think common ground does need to be found. I think it's necessary to network with other townships in similar sizes that have been and seen rapid growth to see how their township is set up. For example, Violet Township has had tremendous growth in the past 25 years. Would they, I would like to know, if they had an administrator, what did they get right? What did they, what would they do differently? As a resident and a business professional, I do see a need for a full-time administrator at the township. The amount of growth that will be happening in the next few years is going to be unprecedented, and I can foresee where this would be extremely beneficial for our township. I also think that the comprehensive plan needs to be revisited with the new information about intel coming into a very nearby town. In regards to the property that Reynoldsburg wants to develop near Mink and 40, that would be just about in our backyard, my backyard. Could annexation be prevented if Edna could develop for a housing development? So I have three kids and I would not be opposed to having a decent, decent housing development, but that could offer maybe some playground and outdoor activities for the residents. I think housing is going to be a huge need within the next few years, and I would like to see Edna lead the way with good quality, reputable, solid housing developers. So the U.S. is short by 5 million houses. There is a huge need and Edna could be a good partner with good quality developers. I think that would be a benefit for our community. I would rather see houses go in than warehouses. I am also not the only one in our small community that feels way, this way, on Bowman. There's another development off of Mink that would be a great example on how it would line up against our property, the size of the houses and the lots, and the quality of the homes. I don't know the name of it, but it's right across for that Amazon warehouse.
Well acres.
Amazon West.
Amne.
Amazon.
So I think that's a great housing development to look at and kind of mirror. And just bring value in the future to Edna because not many other places have. So I also did look at ODOT and it looks like there might be an exit entrance rent plan for the Taylor Road and 70. Sheetz is taking the property and going to be displacing the residence in Shepherd Park mobile home. There is a large apartment complex with retail and restaurants that will be similar to a Grandview yard that's going in at Summit and 40, within Edna Township, but it has been annexed by Reynoldsburg, and these will all be Southwest Looking School District kids. There's also a large ice rink that's going in right by Taylor and 40, that's within two and a half miles of my house. So one thing that Edna is also lacking is office space. I just opened an insurance agency and I wanted my office to be in Edna because that's the community I live in, but I cannot find office space to rent or any space to rent that's not a warehouse. I am concerned that Darren Carlisle isn't still on the board. With the pending lawsuit he has against the Southwest Looking Water District for almost $1 million, I do not think it's in our township's best interest to have him involved in anything, especially with the backdoor deals, misuse of funds, and how he acted during the transition of leadership. Speaking of the Southwest Looking Water District, I think it would be good to work with them in regards to the upgrades and increased capacity that is inevitable. If there is a way to bring upon current and future developers to come up with a plan to help with the infrastructure, it would just be a benefit to our community. The traffic light on Mink is great, I know you guys might not have had anything to do with it, but I'm very happy with signals. While I'm excited and grateful there's parking works that it may not be intense to do, I have to take my kids to Reynoldsburg or Paynard to go to a park. I honestly don't think having one park is going to be enough for the size of our community. There is not enough for kids to do in our area. And on a side note, I did get most of this info from the Reynoldsburg Chamber when the mayor spoke at the last chamber meeting, boasting the improvements that they're going to be making and how it is not really costing the residents anything. Reynoldsburg received a huge, large amount of grants to pay for all of the road improvements and infrastructure improvements. If we had administrator who is familiar with applying for grants, they could not only save our township money, but the cost benefit could outweigh the salary that they are being paid. Also, if you didn't know that, we bought against the third largest town of Columbus, which is my own, I didn't know that. So, thank you.
And we'll be addressing a lot of those items you mentioned today.
Yeah, the traffic light's been changed at Mink and may have come to make a big difference.
It's great.
It is helping.
Yeah.
But that, those accounting, they added a turn signal to it.
Oh, they did?
To allow it to. Anybody else? Ryan?
Ryan Davis, 8807 Watkins Road Southwest. This is destroying our community. I like visualizing, I got kids, this is visualizing. This is destroying our community. We've got people writing negative things about you, we've got people writing negative things about you, and we've got people writing things about you, depending upon the way, whichever one you're looking at, how you take it. This is destroying our community, okay? It's been, in the last two months, I've seen more split votes than I did the first two years I started coming to these boards. Good, bad, I don't know yet. A lot of things shouldn't be happening. I think faster, a lot of people here think should be faster, but we're splitting votes. Let's discuss some more. The last meeting, regardless of my feelings, Grant Vales's feelings, no discussion was had, and that was disheartening. I got a lot of people upset, probably maybe some of here today, I can speak after me. The administrator who voted on February 1st, it's April, we haven't interviewed anybody. We've had people drop out. I don't know why. I know I talked to the two candidates running, administrator were one of my questions. I don't know what's going on, I don't know. I think that needs to be spoken publicly, clearly, with dates and objectives to handle the next meeting, otherwise this is going to drag on. Jersey Township, on 316, they had good written articles saying that they're looking for an administrator. I looked at 2010 census, they've got less people in their township than we did voting last election. Why don't we have it? They think they need one because of the crazy growth. We're already big, we're going to get bigger. We need a full-time administrator yesterday. Rob Platt, I read this article, I wasn't a part of the community at this time, 2016. Mr. Carlisle said he sorely missed and they were, the board was actively looking for replacement. Never happened. Why? Comprehensive plan and economic development, needs to happen. I think the first step is the administrator. Unless one or all three trustees are going to dive into this and put more time and effort into what they're currently doing, or can put more time and effort into what they're currently doing, it's not going to be fair to any one of you to take this on and to develop the way this community needs to go. Transparency, I discussed on that, I would have benefited from discussion to know what's going in everyone's minds. Evans made a motion, he would have discussed it, but it didn't make it to that point. I mean, I want to see, I think this community wants to see more transparency, otherwise we're going to keep seeing this. And I do not want to see accusations, false claims, I mean, as everyone's right, to bash anybody they want to on the internet, it's destroying our community. Appointment versus interview. I mean, there's questions in past administrations of appointments versus proper processes to interview or to hire or to publish jobs or positions or anything. I don't want to see that happen in this board. We can't just point people, we can't just have a fun interview and say, yeah, you're a good person. I don't care what final decision is, let's go right. And finally, I just have a couple of quick questions, and this is where I'd like to, if you'd like to respond. Ms. McKee, you mentioned the meetings that are put together really long. I mean, I'd love to share with the community maybe what you think should be pushed off, what you think maybe is improper, you know, what you added to, what you're, what's on the meeting for you. You have ten of these items, you choose. I have, there's no longer next to it, I don't try to judge. Mr. Johnson, I would like to know what happened after Rob Platt left, where Mr. Carlisle said he wanted to replace him, he sorely missed. Why we don't have an administrator, that wasn't even a topic of conversation? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you guys want to press that or?
Well, there are, you know, some things on the agenda that I had, and so, and like you said, you don't know what they are. And we did have some interviews, just, I don't know if you did that for the administrator.
Any specifics, I mean, that'd be great.
Well, we just, we interviewed, and that's pretty much it. I mean, looking at them, I didn't feel personally that there was somebody I thought would be a good administrator, so. And we don't have to rush and hire anybody, that's the good news. We want to hire somebody that we all think that would be, somebody that would do, you know, a great job for the township. Again, just to make it clear, I never said that we didn't administer it, okay? But we need to assess what we do need to do.
Just to clarify your question, we interviewed four, five people pulled their applications from being interviewed. The board voted to interview before that next meeting came up, that was canceled. We did interview those four, no action. We have two resumes sitting that have not been interviewed and not been contacted, at least the one wasn't contacted by anybody. March 20th, first one. So that's where that's, that answers your question. If you want to respond or move to next.
You want to respond about the ministry of Rob Platt that actually left? We've been through two people that we thought could be on this, and we're trying to merge as an inspector with kind of like administrator. It just wasn't seeming to work too well, and John Carlisle stepped up and said, you know what, I'll take over the administrator part, and he did it for several years. He said it wasn't working, he had time to do it, he liked to do it, and so we let him do it.
So he did it without being interviewed for the position or?
Look, if you want to make public comments, we can.
Is that against your question, Ron?
It does. It does.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I just came in late. Theresa, we're talking right for Trail West. So Carlisle took over the position. He was not interviewed for, did not go through a vetting process or anything. He just assumed the position without going through the proper channels.
No, that's not correct. He assumed the duties. He did the work, is what he did. He stepped up and did the work. Make it clear that we didn't say, oh, you're a minister because he was a...
No, he wasn't. He wasn't paid for the hours he put together for the administrator role. Because I know my trustees, I think, what do you get for the hours which you actually worked?
It's a maximum amount.
Maximum amount?
Based on what?
Because that's one of the things, it's like, if we need, he was doing it full-time. And again, I'll say the same thing as last time. We have a full-time position. It's open. Take applications. Fill it so that Edna Township can move forward and preserve our future.
I think somebody in the faction is trying to...
Run San Pacino, Cumberland Trail, Warren Grill and Columbia Avenue. I agree with everything that Ryan said. I think the decorum since January, this board has been a disgrace and embarrassment to the township. Now, I know Jeff was there before. We didn't have meetings and arguments. And every time I open the newspaper, somebody's lashing out on what travesty the decorum of the meetings are here. And I think it's a disgrace and embarrassment. Now, you have three. You guys don't have to get along, but you need to act respectfully, polite to each other in a proper business-like manner. And as far as I'm concerned, I've worked in 87 municipalities and it's not uncommon to see two votes to one vote. But people respect each other and as a stakeholder here, that's what I expect to see from you, Mark, and from everybody else. Secondly, yes, at some point, we need to update the comprehensive plan. But doing so right now is a waste of time until, until the nine projects that have been waiting for years to be approved of water and sewer, some for two and three years are serviced with water and sewer from Southwest Water Looking and Sewer. Some lady wants an office building. We've been ready to build an office building for two years. We have an urgent care that would like to go in there. We have other businesses and we can't get your service provider to provide water and sewer to us right here despite the fact that they wrote the letters that they had water and sewer. The reason folks are annexing to Reynoldsburg, and there will be more, is because you can't provide water and sewer to them. The most important thing that this board has to do is the way we have a good representative front staff, for him to carry the bucket and bring some closure to how much water and sewer they will ever be able to give you guys. Now, they're building a new plant down there that's going to have 4 million gallons a day. Well, guess what? Free force of will's already gone as they're already diverting things into a plant. So until you can get a straight answer from Southwest Water Looking, Water and Sewer, as to how much sewer you're going to have in the next five years, how much sewer you're going to have in the next 10 years, doing a comprehensive plan is a waste of time. Highest priority, you'll have the new houses. There's five housing developments that don't have water and sewer today and business parks that don't have water and sewer today that have been sitting for years. That is your highest priority, in my opinion. And third, there was an abusive meeting earlier this year about whether the township would like to have fireworks again in Labor Day. And I'm not asking for a decision today, but I think that there should be some discussion. If that's the desire, many things would have to happen in order to have Edna water, Edna fireworks again this year. The old plan was we allowed them to do them at the golf course and we participated, as others did. And then eventually, when the township has its own park, it would move and be shot off the park. So whether you want to carry that plan, whether you want to abandon fireworks for the township, that's your decision. Your agenda today is, you'll never get through this long agenda. I mean, it's ridiculous that this many items on the agenda. You'll never get through these tonight. So certainly, the discussion on whether you want to hold fireworks this coming year can be some other night as well.
But just to quickly address the fireworks, that was not a board-approved event and our insurer and the auditors actually looking into that. It's...
Let's discuss it.
This is 72. So it was a decision by one man, John Carlisle, off the books, along with a few other ones. I have, the reason that there were no arguments previously was, Mr. Johnson even admitted in our open meeting that they had discussions outside meetings, improper against the sunshine law, and they just wouldn't vote. So they come here and...
Like we were saying, you're not going to make statements. You're away with it, all right?
You said that in the meeting.
He's gone.
Okay.
You guys, it's an embarrassment.
So... And I met with the developer that the plan was all warehouses south of 70 between 310 and Mink. And Carlisle had previously indicated he spoke for the other two and that he no longer could towards the end. We're not trying to do one-man rule or anything like that, but things have to be proper. And that's, that's all I'm fighting for. I won't discuss some of the other things, but we are addressing the sewer capacity issue. But one issue is the past board passed tips with an 80% give-back to his development, not accounting for any of our sewer needs, except the developers. I don't have any other comments. Next.
Hello, my name is Melissa Wile. Do you need my address?
Thank you.
Right there. 151 Laser Drive in Caryington. I'm here tonight. It was brought to my attention by a former colleague of mine of a higher the two I was working with. And I, I know when I was an elected official, sometimes it was really helpful to have some understanding for what happened with some of our hires. So I wanted to bring something to your attention that you probably are not aware of. Back six years ago, I worked with one of the candidates. He was very problematic in my time at Caryington. It started out very minor things. You would pay a hundred bucks for a ticket to go to a morse event and not show up. I would question why that happened and it was not a family event and it was not a city event. He was doing other things. And then it turned into, because of my injuries there, I was no longer allowed to talk to any of the employees. They were not allowed in a room without him present. Well, some of those employees, because of this, ended up approaching me later on and we found out that there was a lot of sexual harassment and a more serious issue from that as well. So I didn't hear any more about that. I left the city of Caryington before I was able to complete anything with that particular individual. He did take some of his anger out on my business after I left, which was quite fun. But I am happy to speak with you guys in private, give you guys details. The person who alerted me to this is a, I guess, somebody you guys were working with and she will have nothing to do with him either and has withdrawn, I guess, her aid over here with New York that he's going to be hired. I just want you guys to know because I think it's a very, very dangerous situation you're getting yourself into. We had several women who left because of the treatment that they received by him and they went to other organizations, which was really sad because they were very bright, intelligent, energetic young women and they were a great part of our team. And he just could not leave them alone. So if you guys have any questions, I know Mark Forn has my phone number. A person connected us, so if you guys would like to, I'm happy to speak with anybody.
I already provided to them previously.
Okay.
Was there any question? Was there, was, did the HR department, so did you get a moment?
Yes, and that person was fired by him. Sorry.
Thank you.
And that's the information I've got to give you. Any other speakers?
Good evening. My name is Thea Young. I'm at 9167 Taylor Road Southwest. And two things I'd just like to say, I want, thank you for your service. I appreciate it. I also want to say that this is a public meeting and people are watching. And we can't hear you. You have to speak into your microphones. You have to ask the audience to speak into the microphones because what is being said is very important. The public does want to hear. I personally, last week, got five requests how to see that meeting on YouTube and was shared with about 20 people. So people are watching and they're listening and they're churning away from social media because of the infighting. I also want to say that I did send Mr. Johnson and Ms. McKee an email last week asking for reasoning why the question to remove Mr. Carlisle and Mr. Rogers from the TIRC boards was not discussed. As of today, I did not get a response for either one. My belief is that the simple understanding of the operation of the township would have allowed the transparency of that discussion to be in that meeting. If someone would have just seconded it, it could have been discussed. You didn't have to vote on it. But the discussion is what is needed in this community. Good or bad, right or wrong, we need to hear what you're thinking and doing. Because there was no vote, there was no public discussion. I had to learn from the advocate. I'm shaking. I'm sorry. It's my body. I had to learn from the advocate, Ms. McKee and Mr. Johnson's reasoning. The advocate is not a public forum. Ms. McKee is quoted in the advocate as saying, "In state government, a governor appointment appoints people to boards and even if there is a change in the party in power, the people will continue on those terms." And she applied that reasoning to her thought process. My two new questions for Mr. Johnson and Ms. McKee are, do you still think that individuals, not the party, in the past and possibly current administration, and I quote Ms. Johnson, excuse me, Ms. McKee, from the public forum at the school before the election, that it was a bribe and it should be investigated? Are Mr. Rogers and Mr. Carlisle the best individuals? And again, not the party to represent Edna? I have two questions and Mr. Adams answered some of that question, but I would like a little bit more detail about the special investigation in the state of Ohio concerning individuals and the township. And I would like to have contact information, case numbers, those types of things so that I can do that research on my own without doing a FOIA request, taking up this township's time. I think it's simple.
Do you want me to respond or you have other questions?
I got one more question.
Thanks.
The second question I have is to Julie. Is, has the township paid fines and penalties because of the dereliction of duties of the past fiscal officers? That question has been alluded to many, many times, but there is no concrete information for me to go and gather to make a discerning, discerning judgment on that, which really relates to back to my statement. Is the TIRC boards and the appointments have a direct relationship to the administration and consultant debate? It also has a direct relationship to Reynoldsburg's aggression through election? I see Ms. Chambers here tonight. And the annexation to have a voice on this board? And if you do not believe that Reynoldsburg wants to have a voice on this board concerning water, then you are fooling yourselves. I personally know landholders that have been broached by Reynoldsburg that are offering the unbeknownst to Reynoldsburg. I mean, they're offering water through the developers. That's what I have to say. I do want you to take, really think about, speaking into your microphones. People are interested. They want to be able to hear you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Quickly on the investigation, two matters are currently being investigated. The private agreement between Mr. Carlisle and the developer to plow his undedicated roads with township resources, that's one. And then the other is the fireworks where it was not a board approval. Township resources were used. Funds were sent directly to Mr. Carlisle's house. There's a lot being looked at, but those are the two. And I could provide you some more information after on that. Regarding the fines, I believe, I don't know if this, Barry wants to address that, but there was a $500 fine, I believe, for the IRS not payment of employment taxes and some other issues. But she couldn't...
Well, there's a few things that I've been working on extensively since I started. And one of them was a $500 fine to IRS for not paying the taxes on time for payroll. So during, I think it was July to October, the payments weren't made or were made late and they sent us a $500 fine for that. There's been credit card fines and fees because things weren't paid. They stopped getting bills and things started, stopped getting a lot of attention around October, November last year. So when I came in, there was a lot to catch up on. And thankfully, the bank has waived some of the fines and incurred fees for that. Most of my other time has been working with Office of Budget and Management to not have to pay back the $340,000 of CARES Act money that we received. Mr. Walters kept a spreadsheet and receipts and didn't follow the guidelines for those funds. So when he did that, he had to reallocate those funds to a specified account to get, to put the expenses that they spent out of that account directly to that, which he did transfer the $340,000 to the CARES Act account. However, he never went back and added the expenses in that they paid for out of the general fund to that account. A side note to that was they, out of that money, they paid $309,000 to the West Looking Fire Department as a sub grant. It was the township's responsibility to keep track of that, those sub grant funds and get the ledgers from West Looking Fire to supply it to Office of Budget and Management. That never happened. It still hasn't happened. I started working on that in February and the ledgers are still, we're still weighing on the ledgers because they have to have a meeting and they had to figure out how to put the funds in the correct account and show their expenses as well. As part of that, there were also wages and bonuses paid in December, I believe, of last year that we couldn't find a resolution that they had passed. So those funds became unquestionable and appropriated incorrectly. So those funds became unquestionable and appropriated incorrectly. So, all in all, as soon as we have the 309,000 details from the West Lookin' Fire and their ledgers, the Office of Budget and Management will be happy. Ultimately, we had to reallocate $29,000 of the money that we received to the sheriff's contract that we pay for yearly, because otherwise we have to pay it back.
So is that criminal? Is it a fix for it? I'm just asking.
A fix for it?
Yeah, is there some way we can make it right, is what I'm asking?
Well, I dug for receipts and through ledgers for nine weeks now, trying to make it right so that we don't have to pay it back. If I don't get the ledgers from the West Lookin' Fire, we're on the hook for $390,000.
Okay, alright.
Speaking of, we have a meeting next Thursday. And we have to approve in the meeting at any time.
Again, this goes to proper policies and procedures not being in place to do this. I commend Julie for coming in, and another resident asked about why did we hire a consultant helper? Because the books were a mess. Again, you asked about criminal, there was an ORC violation that certified transition. By the township was actually instrumental in getting this law passed, that you have to attest and provide a list of everything. Mr. Rogers attested that he provided a list of passwords, that he did not. And that is breaking the law that has been turned in. And as I said, Mr. Johnson attested to receiving those improperly. And that's, we need to stop those actions, we've got to do what's right. And we're getting there, but there's a lot of hesitation and making changes.
And this is all in the CARES Act, though, right, Julie?
Well, the $340,000, I was talking about, yes, but then there's also the credit card fines.
And the CARES Act was adjusted? I mean, there were questions about bribery concerning CARES Act money to begin with. And I don't want to debate that. What I just want to say, I know it's my five minutes, thank you for letting me talk, I don't get out of the house much. What I want to say, though, is, is go back to the question, is I would like to have a public debate about Mr. Rogers. And even if you don't want to debate Mr. Carlyle on those two boards, I think it's a serious question.
I have that on agenda in a minute, we'll plan on discussing. Well, thank you. Is there anybody else who wants to speak?
Let somebody else speak.
Julie, in the first.
I won't take much of your time, okay?
Any address, please?
My name is Chuck Bundy, I'm 10254 Tolgate Road. Last November, I voted for a change, because I perceive corruption in this room. And so I voted for a change, and I'm just not seeing that change, it's not happening. The compromise is not happening, everybody here has their agenda, I understand that. But do you guys have to compromise with one another? This township is on the verge of change, whether it's planned or it's not planned, it's going to change. And it's up to you three, right now, to work together to make the change in a positive way. Right now, all I see is negative. You need to share responsibilities. I was here for the organizational meeting in January, and I saw one person assume ninety percent of the chairmanships. That's not right. You've got to forget your personal agendas and work together, work for the good of the township. The most good for those people. Now, a couple of things I want to mention, and that is a blight on township, on Tolgate Road. FedEx has been in existence last fall, and the houses across the road from FedEx have not been, well, they've just fallen more disrepair than ever. There are light, I wouldn't be surprised if there's also a drug dealing that's going on there, I don't know. But that needs to be fixed. The other thing that I want to mention is that administrator, we need to have an administrator. I feel like, it's just an observation, I feel like a separate administrator, rather than having the trustees do the job, would be less apt to be corrupt than to have the trustees do it themselves. That's all I have.
Regarding the House, I told you they're being addressed, they are being taken down. They're in the process. You see a few disappear near and there. It is being addressed. And as far as compromise, I do bring forward many of the agenda items, because, again, many do not think we need any change. However, even on the appointments, I suggested appointments, and the other board members do have the opportunity to suggest their own people changes. And the only reason that last appointment wasn't advertised is because of the imminence of that meeting. And we could have appointed, we didn't even appoint alternatives to the boards. And they had to cancel the meeting because they didn't have enough people.
Well, for the last minute, though.
It's.
It wasn't for us, no.
No, exactly.
No, what I'm saying, we could have, but again, it's, I'm willing to compromise, but, and I put forward everything, it doesn't have to be my way. Pick yourself an administrator, I'm all ready to say, put names on it, we'll spin it, pick them. Because it's long overdue, so, crucial. Anybody else? Judy?
Judy Newman, 9630 Lindes Road. I'm here again to complain about FedEx, Skene, about the noise, it's 24/7, negative impact on our lives. Couple of weeks ago, I went out in my yard in the evening, the fumes were so bad, burning inside my nose, along with several of my neighbors. I like to have my windows open in the winter, or in the summer. You know, I like to wake up to the birds singing. We hear FedEx back there, 24/7, all night long, all day long, all night long. It's not fair to the residents. When they came here, they made us all these promises, said that we would never know that they're back there. We know they're there. From what I understand, they're dropping their trailers, it sounds like mom's going home. I mean, it scares the daylights out of me. It just shouldn't be. I mean, when, the evening that they approved it, Judy Realhorn said, oh, they're going to be out there tonight, going to sound stuff. Well, send them out there now, do a sound study, do an air quality test as well, because it's ridiculous. We should not have our, we should not be having our lives impacted because they're back there. I mean, and also about the wall. Who's going to maintain the eight feet from the property line? They've never smoothed down the dirt, it's tree roots, three, four, five inches in diameter, sticking up out of the dirt. I have always smote here, which, they've taken 20 feet of what I used to take care of. But, you know, who's going to maintain it? They haven't even smoothed down the dirt or anything. And, you know, and why did they put the 10-foot wall where it's open to the residents' yards? I mean, down the road, there's a half acre woods. But we don't have wood, and so we have the lowest wall, 10 feet, we can see right over top, we have their lights shining in our window. And, you know, I don't see anything progressing. I've been here several times complaining, and I guess, maybe I need to do what the people on Taylor and May did, bring the news in. You know, let them see, let Lisa Roncola, Channel 6, see the cake where they made all these promises and haven't done anything. And as far as I'm concerned, that 10-foot fence where everybody else has got a 10-foot fence is just a slap in the face. Also, about the water and sewer. I think that these developers need to have an impact fee. You know, I've been a resident here for 50 years. I've paid this debt elimination fee for 25 years, and I certainly don't want to continue paying because they put all these warehouses there.
Regarding, are you done?
Yes.
Regarding the impact fee, townships cannot do that, cities can, so it's a little different. I have been working with Skene, I've known with Vicki Ensel and a few others there, trying to get some resolution. If I were on the board at the time, I would have gone with the zoning commission's recommend to deny. But the past board approved it, and it is a quality of life issue, especially them dropping trailers. So I am working with Dana Harrington, he said he has two options. He hasn't shared those with me. And I was going to have a little bit more update later, full update on that project, of where it's at with Rennelsberg and everything with the other building.
Well, it's like, they said that the wall was going to be up before construction started, and it was not. Because they didn't have the drainage of prison. Well, I'm sorry, but drainage should have been approved.
And that wall is in a valley.
Even when it was approved.
Right, and the wall is in a valley, so.
Yes.
So I understand. I'm fighting for you, I'm dealing with the developers and that, so.
Don't make me bring the news in.
Well, if you need to, bring them in, get more attention, I want to vote on this.
I've got an attorney, and he thinks we have a case.
So, yeah, like I said, I want to vote, so. Is there anybody else that would like to speak?
Hi, everyone. Name and address, please? Scott Gil Castro from Trivell.
Larry Taylor from Trivell.
Hi, everyone, Scott Gil Castro from Trivell Energy. And we've been working with, alongside you guys, for quite some time with the energy aggregation program. I think there's been a recent happening that I think is really important, that we get the news out around to you. Not only to you, but your residents here, I wasn't expecting, largest group I've ever seen here, but I'm actually kind of happy they're here so they can hear a little bit about it.
Thank you.
You bet. I'm trying to keep this moving along, it's like, wait, you have five minutes? I got it.
Talk into the microphone.
What's that?
Talk into the microphone.
Okay.
We can't hear you.
No worries, I'll speak up. Albert? We're good here, how's that, better?
Good, yes.
All right, everybody. Good evening. You know, there's been a really bad movement in the energy world. As you guys may know, the natural gas prices have gone from, you know, last year at 24 cents per CCF to 60 cents in November, and 39 cents here January, February, 61 cents, and lastly, 44 cents. Today, gas is trading at 60 cents per CCF. That's just the raw price of gas, not including the adders that, you know, the suppliers add on, or that the utility does. The point being is, it's driven some suppliers out of business. And one such supplier that happens to be here local, that we've been using successfully for nine years, filed for Chapter 11 last, yeah, that's pretty, it's unbelievable. You know, I consider some of those people friends, they've done this community right for a lot of years. And I guess, you know, just got caught upside down. So what does this mean for all of you here sitting today? It's unfolding before our eyes, I've been on the phone, I'm on the unsecured creditors committee, I've been on the phone with attorneys, this committee, all week, all last week, and the Chapter 11 is moving at the speed of light. So I don't have as much information as I'd like, but I've been told that most of the accounts that are going to go back to the utility, there is a very good possibility that voluntary energy will send you back to the utility, at which point we can make some decisions about what we want to do with the community going forward. I have created, with another supplier local out of Powell, Archer Energy, the opportunity for us to get into another program with them. It does give us a slight savings over the utility. And what it more importantly does, is gives us the opportunity to execute a fixed rate agreement in the event that rates dip down, and we think there's a buying opportunity. So I will follow up with you trustees on that later, not this evening, but I promise we'll do that. In the meantime, you may be getting notices, folks, that Volunteers gone out of business. And you may be getting, you know, know that you might drop back from utility, don't be alarmed. Although rates are just continuing to get worse and worse. One more thing for everybody here tonight, and that listens, you trustees, we have a 4.61 or 6.7 rate through May of 2023 for the electric agreement. We are anticipating rates, right now you're paying 5.3 if you're using the default utility. The default utility come June 1st is going to go up exponentially. I know, I'm sorry to say this, I'm just the messenger, sorry, but I'm going to at least keep you informed on where things are headed. Our anticipation could be somewhere around seven cents a kilowatt hour for ADP customers. It's a massive increase. But if you're not using the Aetna program, it's with Energy Harbor, call my office. I'm trying to remember, is it? Sorry. Call my office, I think there may be information here. I can give the township here information, put on the website if need be, but we can get something so that you guys know who to call. Utilize that program, with rates going where they're headed, it's going to save you quite a bit of money. So, my next steps, and Larry here has just joined our group, he was with Volunteer, he's got a lot of years' experience doing this, smart guy, just letting me know, he's going to help work on your program here in Aetna. And he'll be following up with you with next steps, you know, the Archer energy agreement, and then the statement for your website and all that, okay?
Be in touch.
Yep, thank you so much. Larry?
Good to meet you all.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Energy Harbor, they own household, very good. First Energy, same outfit.
Well, the First Energy Solutions, well, we can't, we've got a long group now. You guys can just talk.
Yeah, it's a different group now, so.
All right, is there somebody else? All right, I'll close public comments. We'll move on to reports, road report, I did see those from John Copley. Again, glad to see you back on vacation. And just like I said, you did a great job while you were gone, so, appreciate this hard work. Zoning report, did see the reports there, and you did touch on my question about boom trucks there, we're going to talk about that a little later. Water and sewer, Trent Stepp, our representative, said he would be giving us a report later in the week, so at the next meeting we'll deal with that. They did re-zone some property, or at the Lincoln Plant Commission for a new plant up in St. Albans. And we're still dealing with the sewer capacity here locally. Fire districts, Chuck, anything?
Yeah, we're working, closing on final plans for the new firehouse, they're going to build up on that. We're in the township, over on Taylor Road, where Station 4 is now, right across the street from it. Close to the power lines, but they cut down all trees through there. But there's an area right there, and should be a very nice firehouse, plenty of the community. And so the western end of the township, better from that.
And then as far as firehouses, I know previously, in the High Point development, Mr. Settino talked about it. I think, I thought there was a discussion about donation of land for Park District there, the firehouse. Is that still on the board, or, you know, we pulled out of the park purchase, I don't know if we still end with that.
Yeah, I'm not sure where that's at, but it's like.
Cemetery, Ms. McKee?
No change, this is just, we just got to make sure that if there's, if there was an acquire, but any kind of query, it goes into our cemetery, we want to make sure we get this painted prior to making that.
Are there any reports or compliance that we have filed to the hardware cemetery? Parks and Recreation?
Just an update on parks. There is some movement over at the park that we're looking at over here, that the property that Aetna Township purchased, met with some of the developer yesterday in their attorney. So I guess you tell me, get the water, back to the water sewage, that's one of the holdups that's going on right now. So once that starts getting movement there, then they can start looking at developing and also the parks and additional things that has to happen on our side.
Do you know the status of lot splits on the other ones? Because I know that, the only one contingent is the Langwell property with the sewer.
That's exactly, well, it's not there yet.
Do you mind if I get on that lot splits on?
Not at all, no updates at all.
Todd, do you know?
I just, I sent an email to the attorney yesterday that was working on those. I haven't gotten an answer back from him, but he was in direct contact with the sewer layers, they can get it.
So I had a conversation with, I think, Gene Snyder or something? Uh, regarding one property, he's concerned that we're having to make our deadline for the splits. So I just wanna make sure that we do meet those, cause he's got other obligations too for his funds that he's coming out.
Both of them being, working together now. And the quarrels being done, that opens up and takes a little bit of the landlot stuff, so things should move along well.
And if you had any more discussion with the EP, I think they're closed.
No, sir. I haven't heard any more from them.
Cause they said that updated map and I, I haven't heard anything on, on the, uh, right away. All right, and, uh. Um, and then Judge B, Judge, uh, one and two, we don't have any reports. Judge boards, no reports. Um, I don't know, I think since we have a speaker here for the blessing box, I'd like to skip to Judy. Is that okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, for the blessing box, if you wanna take that or?
Well, Judy, wanna present anything right now? No, she gave us some handouts here.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't have much of that, um, last time that I talked about it.
Yeah, so pictures here.
Um, I just wanted you guys to consider, and I believe that was passed the last time I spoke about the blessing box. And it's just a small, um, a small box and it, it's basically leave what you can, take what you need. So it's for anyone in the area that, um, would need food. Um, so I just need to get the plans. My husband has offered to build it. Um, and I would just need to get the plans approved that are on the back, um, so we can move forward.
And you would, you would be, with what we've, well, you guys would maintain it as far as keeping it.
Correct, and really anyone else in the, you know, the neighborhood that is willing to help do that, you know, so, but yes, I am.
Okay.
Anything else?
Well, we did discuss that. We wanna make sure it's kinda unhertry, so to kinda keep it a little shaded in the summer months. And then I guess she mentioned eventually when we use security cameras, we said that can kinda have, you know, give it the more, you know, so it doesn't get vandalized and we can keep eye on it. Um, other than that, that's pretty much.
The plans are the biggest thing at this point because I think we can discuss location once it's built and, um, we're certainly not gonna put it in the ground until you guys tell us where. So, um, the plan's in a collar if you have the preference of what you plan it, so.
I, I did have a question. I mean, so you guys did discuss the location at all? I know you said unhertry, but.
No, because of back to what we were talking about, the security camera, we had mentioned it, having security cameras off this building that will kinda have a, so that will make a difference.
I just, I'm not sure how much, you know, uh, you guys have discussed. I've been trying to research and the people that have these blessing boxes in place, they say it's best to have them in an open environment for safety, for safety reasons and well lit. Uh, one of the concerns, I was thinking more about it in the park and, but we don't shovel the park path during the winter, do we? My concern would be is if it is in the park, it's gonna be used year round. If we don't maintain those paths, that's kind of a safety issue. I was thinking, and I came here at night, uh, that there's a location just maybe right outside the, beside the store. Um, are there, right down by the trash cans, it's well lit. Or right outside this front or this parking. I do have concerns about down by the trash cans. If it's up in the grass area, we've got the high step. I think most people won't walk around. I don't see the problem. I have to write out there. It's well lit and if things have to be disposed, trash cans are right there. My preference would be right outside here. Petascola has theirs right at their admin building. Uh, I think would be better than the park to keep an eye on it. And like I said, winter, I would be concerned about those paths and not being shoveled out of the boards, if you like. Those are locations I was thinking.
Is this dry? Shove, shovel right here?
Yes.
So I was thinking just right out here where someone can pull in a park. And if it's facing east, that helps in the wintertime just to kind of protect that. Um, but, but I'm open to, you know, that's really your, has a decision on where. I just know they, they recommended the shade.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, did you see?
Well, she, she provided this.
Those are where I was. Well, you're saying cross the park right over there.
But I'm open to, you know, I just would like to see it here, so.
Right. And I think we got, and then have you talked to the prosecutor about any kind of lack of the old ear?
Not yet. I wanted to make sure.
I did notice on some boxes that they have a placard saying, "We are not responsible for," cause you don't know what people are putting in there.
Right, right.
So maybe we need to address that a bit.
Taskful, see how they, they handle this.
So do you have any action?
That's it for now, no.
Any action items? I mean, do you wanna approve a design or you wanna talk?
Well.
You were saying a small design. I mean, do we, wanna make it bigger?
It shows on the back of this.
Yes, yes.
So I know some, sometimes people put some larger, uh, dry products.
The smaller one is a pretty good size. If you see that on the front, the ones at Petascola are probably double the size. So, you know, we just have to get the donations to fill it if we're gonna make it that big.
So no action? Is this just an update or are we gonna improve the design or? That's what they go, would like to do as a board. We can't move things forward. Let's move things forward. Let's not delay just for delays sake.
Okay, so I know Judy and John, I spoke last week and one of the things that you talked about is the fundings. So are we?
The funding shouldn't be.
Okay, okay. That was one of the things, John, I, okay, all right. So, yeah, we can move on this, but I, like you mentioned, I do have to get with the prosecutor to make sure, you know, our liability, how we would proceed, but yeah, it'd be a good thing for our community.
So you guys let us know when that's approved?
Yes, okay.
These are the plans that would like approved?
Do, do we wanna approve this plan now so they can start building it? This is what I'm saying, if, if we don't have to wait, we don't.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with the plan. I mean, I have a problem with the plan. Jeff, what do you think?
Okay.
Yeah, and I like the way you have it at angle, so.
To move things along, I'll make a motion to approve the blessing box plan as presented. Uh, is there a second?
Uh, well, second.
Mr. McKee, second. Any discussion? Uh, the only thing I would say is color wise and stuff and we would determine that at the time, uh, but if not, roll call, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And good luck with that. Uh, since we have a sheriff here, let's do the sheriff contract here in case he gets to get out of here. Uh, and the new business, uh, C, uh, sheriff contract and additional deputies. Uh, I met with, uh, Lieutenant Carson and the other day talking about, uh, possibly bringing on additional deputies. We've had an increase in incidents, crime. It's been kind of steady, uh, over the years. Right now, we've got two deputies, one I need shipped, uh, one, the third shift is not covered except under just kind of, uh, blanky coverage from the county. One thing as a resident, I envisioned that we had twenty deputies just roaming the county at each shift. And I was told it's either three and three or three and two for the entire county. And that's one of the reasons we, we've hired this two. Um, there's been a lot more, uh, crime. I mean, thefts are up thirty-six percent from, uh, two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty, or from twenty. I, I think one of the things, commercial development is impacting quality of life and we should try to address that as best as possible. Speaking with the deputies and, uh, the lieutenant, um, I believe that we need, uh, someone on the third shift and then another deputy kind of, uh, as an overlap, um, because again, we're getting busier and busier. A lot of reports have taken our current deputies out of, uh, uh, action for, for a while. Our contract is actually up this year, end of this year, so we'll have to later on talk about renewing it. Um, the current, the two thousand twenty-one cost for deputies, a hundred and five thousand-ish dollars per year. Uh, and then the cruisers for about fifty-four thousand, two thousand twenty-two, and that's with a twenty-year-plus service record deputy, so salaries vary a little bit. Is a hundred and eight thousand, so it's with everything, everything goes up. I would propose hiring two additional deputies to deal with these thefts and that. Our population residential is about eight thousand, like we have about ten thousand employees and it's just gonna grow. So, and, and they're dealing with quite a bit there, so for the safety of our residents, I would propose adding two additional deputies. Actually. I have a proposal. No, I didn't. I just do my motion, but I would move that we, that we hire the two additional deputies now uh, because it's gonna take a while for them to even hire them and get the vehicles if we make use of their discussion. They're, they're, they're looking at hiring three right now and they're talking about, uh, if they get out of academy and all that in August. Is that correct? Lieutenant? Yeah, you can, please. If you'd state your name.
Uh, my name is Chad Carson.
No, I have a share of office.
Um, oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said my name. Um, so right now the sheriff's office, we're short three patrol deputies.
Okay.
Right, uh, we are in the process of hiring, replacing those three. Uh, if, at the township, we want two more positions filled out here, uh, we would have to hire to fill those positions.
Okay.
Um, the climate we're in right now with hiring for law enforcement officers is very difficult finding quality candidates. Um, sheriff's office, we hire quality candidates. We just don't kind of spin the wheel and see what name sticks. Wanna make sure that they're ready fit for our agency for your township and our agency's fit for them. Um, the three that we have in our process right now to fill our three vacancies, they've not graduated from police academy until the end of May, so they will not be available to us until the middle of June. At that time, it's, once we start them, it's about fifteen weeks for a training program, uh, to make sure that they're, they're, they're fit for duty. Um, so it could be, at the township, one's additional officers. It could be August, September before we can place those folks out here.
Okay.
Uh, the other part of it is vehicles. You mentioned, uh, state of the vehicles for law enforcement right now is, uh, we're short two cars in total. Uh, the three large manufacturers for our police vehicles have all stopped taking orders for this year. We can't find one. I'm sorry, we found two, but the price is crazy high, more than anybody wants to pay for one. Um, but the sheriff's office is prepared to, once we get those officers in place, have the deputies in place here at the township. We have spare vehicles that we can, we'll say loan to the township, provide to the township until new ones can be purchased for those few months.
And I would, I would propose, uh, the next item on the agenda is the CAREZAC funds that we could use that to pay for, pay for these deputies. As, as a resident, I always said, instead of paying for trash, we should pay for deputies or other, other things that are impacting your quality of life. Uh, so I, I think if we pay for it, we should be more proactive and reactive when it comes to crime. Uh, there's a lot happening at, at night, a lot of business, thefts, kind of like burgers, vehicle thefts, two, three vehicles at a time. Uh, businesses being broken into and that's just gonna increase, especially as the temperature increases. Uh, more, you know, there's more activity. So I would personally like to see more deputies out there and then combined with that, more patrols of the neighborhood. We'd be able to do more of that with speeding or special, special, uh, I guess assignments on that. So I'd like to see if the board, like I said, I want a resolution, but I think we can do my motion or you, you hired these, you added a deputy before.
Those are two of them. I haven't, but two aren't initially in the initial contract.
You guys were talking about adding a third one.
Yeah, that, that would be, uh, if we could get a third one if needed. I think I left the contract there, but I believe.
Um, the contract is for two, uh, eight times the commitment to that contract, um, for additional, uh, through the life of this contract. And obviously for the contract to be negotiated for January one of two thousand twenty-three. Then however many the number is, we'll be negotiating for placing that contract.
And my, my concern is the longer we wait, the less availability of vehicles and also the personnel. Cause if we really need somebody, it's, you know, if we decide in August, well, it could be, again, I think we should be more proactive.
But yeah, it's what, what would be, you're saying that we have, we have no coverage every day from like Saturday, what is it, Saturday?
So your current staffing for head of township right now is, uh, we have a day shift deputy that's eight to eight AM to four PM, Monday through Friday. Um, the reason for that assignment is, um, most businesses are open during the daytime during the week and also the schools are in session during the week during the daytime. Uh, South Coast looking does, uh, provide SRO, uh, however, with the, the size of Southwest looking schools, sometimes he gets overwhelmed. So we have the township deputy to assist in, in, for school problem. Uh, we have a deputy that works three P M to eleven P M. Now there's an hour overlap so that they can meet, discuss township issues that they've had for the day. Um, pass along good information. Uh, they work three to eleven and they have Sunday, Mondays off. Reason that was determined, we looked at statistically speaking, between Tuesday and Saturday during three to eleven shift is when it's supposed to be busiest. Sunday is not very busy, Monday's generally not too busy, so we gave that. But the discussion we had yesterday was obviously midnight shift deputy, we would look at the busiest, all the services for the county, pretty, excuse, township. Figure out the days off would be, and then for overlap, our, uh, provided information regards to peak hours, um, who were calls for service for us. Uh, and looking at that, top of my head, it's probably like a noon to eight or a two to ten type position with two days off. So that you would have somebody out here. Basically every day you have faced.
Yeah, so we just need the one, you're saying we need the one deputy to cover that anytime for every.
And then overlap for.
Yeah, um, so the busiest times, um, business picks up at that township around four o'clock and goes to about eight o'clock, does your team for court times, peak crime times. Um, so our deputies are stretched pretty thin during those peak times. But as a person, the fourth deputy would have that assignment, uh, that would take load off of it and get, give them an opportunity to be out in the community more, um, with complaints and neighbors into that picture.
I saw some overtime numbers of looking at, on average. So how much average overtime is a deputy getting at the township?
Um, that I don't know and it honestly depends on the activities that they have. Generally speaking, your afternoon shift deputy will have more overtime, uh, because of overtime, uh, things of that nature, um, generated from at township, uh, calls for service. Um, afternoon shift generally also runs into problems. If he gets off eleven o'clock, he'll get a call at ten, ten-thirty. He may be one, two o'clock before he's finished with reports, getting charges ready for the next day, processing evidence, processing the scene, things of that nature. Um, I don't know the numbers in regards to overtime, but I do know that the afternoon shift person gets more overtime just because it's the nature of the beast of law enforcement. Afternoon shift is usually the busiest shift and those are the folks that turn most calls.
Would additional deputies cut down on potential overtime where they'd be able to handle stuff when the other one's supposed to be ticking off?
Should be, um, when it comes to law enforcement, if, if, if I would take a, if I were making arrest on somebody at ten o'clock, if it's my arrest, I've gotta do the case. I've gotta do the charges packet, stuff like that. I can't pass law enforcement's guy to do that, so. If it were free, yes, they would have more like, more time to finish reports during their shift when there's an overlap, so it should reduce the overtime.
Okay, and I spoke with, um, Mayor Mike Compton from Petascola, um, how many police they have out and they were actually shocked at the level, the low level of coverage we have based on our population and employment in our area. He, he said theirs is minimum four and their, their population or the thing is about ours with everybody in our warehouses distribution. Those warehouses are taking a lot of calls.
We do handle a lot of calls in the, uh, business part, um, for a variety of things.
And that, and that's where I say that the last year, the board gave, you know, gave away over a million dollars. You know, so with the HARP funds and CAREZAC funds, uh, we, I believe the CAREZAC funds, the four hundred and sixty-three thousand that we're gonna, uh, talk about on the agenda, those should go towards the additional.
They're not on CAREZAC, but the HARP.
The, the, the HARP, yeah. So the funds that, yeah.
We can use that for that, correct? Cause there was a lot of discussion about that.
We can use, it's pretty much general funds the way we're doing it, but if, if you, you could pay for it other ways and use that for something. It's still the same thing, though, saying we, we could allocate that on the books to, you know, we paid for two years of, two, two additional deputies. And I think, again, the. And I think, again, the quality of life being impacted by all this, the commercial's good, providing jobs for that, but we have to deal with the bad side of it too. So, you know, providing parts, providing stuff, and security is number one. Because I can tell you, my neighborhood, within a week, each neighbor was hit, each night, and one was hit twice. They came back and got hit, and they were parking at the, the South Central building, right by the field. It's, it's a bad feeling, you know, being violated like that, losing tools, losing stuff, and I think having a deputy patrolling is good, and we need to support the officers because they are busy during the day. Cindy and Matt are, the one that I think Cindy had at least seven, eight reports she had to do, and.
Doesn't all come for.
We, we, we don't wanna tax them, we don't wanna, you know, we wanna support them as, as best we can. So I wanna see if you guys are open to, I would like to move that we, we move forward in hiring two additional deputies at the soonest availability they can be provided by the sheriff's office.
I got a question for you though. So how much the average calls or reports or whatever, based what the deputies have to do at the township, based on what an average sheriff has to do out in the rest of the county?
Um, it quite frankly depends on where the deputy assigned to work. Our east, east district deputies handle less amount of calls for service than our western, west in county deputies handle. But pound for pound, the deputy's do handle more calls generally on an average daily basis than the rest of our cars do. Now, I also understand that if Sidney, the deputy that was down here during the daytime, as she starts getting back up on calls for service, we will send one of our district cars down here to assist her in clearing up calls for service or backing her up on the egregious calls. So they're never left by themselves, we always will provide them with whatever assistance they need, their job is to do the same, but. An average west district car, which would handle union township, parish township, all that north, they're handling four, five, six dispatch calls a day. But I think if we look at the numbers, I didn't necessarily go for average per day, they, the at the township cars are, are pound for pound handling more calls than our other district cars are.
That is the highest location of calls in the county.
Yeah, so provide stats to the township trustees, I gave them to the municipal officer, did you get those? Awesome. Traditionally speaking, at the township has the most calls for service, and it has been that way for seven, eight, nine, ten years. At the township, always rank number one for calls for service. This is kinda because it's in the busiest, most populated areas. Usually areas of that town, or union township are usually second.
And the calls keep increasing, I saw on one chart, we're at thirty-five hundred, forty, I mean, two thousand twenty, we're at fifty-three hundred total calls, two thousand twenty-one, sixty-one hundred and seventy-five, sixteen percent increase.
Now, this year from January one to the March thirty-first, at the township, that thirteen hundred and fifty calls for service. So quick math, mathematician, so you're looking probably around fifty-eight hundred calls for service at the township this year. The two at the township deputies that you have assigned right now, out of those thirteen hundred and fifty calls, handle about four hundred and twenty-five of those calls for service, which means nine hundred is being handled by our district cars during off time, at the township deputies off time, or coming down the system, or on midnight shift.
So we're still getting some base coverage, however, response time.
Response times are, are a little bit, will be a little bit longer on days when there's not a, at the township deputy assigned to work. We don't have the capability to provide that average response times, usually we don't anymore. But when we did the study prior to, when we first entered this agreement at the township, after the first year, we did a quick study just to see what the impact was. We dropped average response times, two to three minutes per call, but if you're looking at on handling a third of the calls, then you're still gonna have, right, most average times. But the, the deputies are very quick to respond to calls at the township, doesn't take long, give them one to the township, or the other to the township, we need two.
I know, we looked at, we looked at, I can speak as you ask, and we looked at what we needed based on those type numbers either, and we needed two at the time. So I guess my question's, what's changed, would we need two more, maybe do we just need one more?
Crime.
Have we had a double in that timeframe?
I wouldn't say it's doubled, but we've added, what'd you say, twenty-five percent increase from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-one, it was twenty-five percent.
I mean, if you look at, the, the crimes gone up in two, we're growing, we're, I think we need to be proactive, not reactive, Pat. If you start getting crimes happening, especially like catalytic, uh, convertible stops, which is happening often, you, you need that preventative, those officers to be, not just taking reports, but try to prevent them, have them seen, have them. I said, I, I think this is needed, again, for the impacts in the community, and there's actually been more discussion on this than paying trash, which was three hundred and something, I, I think this should be almost more of that. I am, you know, I appreciate the questions, Pat, but have you reviewed all the crime stats that he sent you? I, I pulled through, I, I mean, I've created my own spreadsheets and analyzed it of, you know, thirty, thirty-six percent more theft. It just, you know.
I should have justified one, but I was having hard time with two, that was low, that was what I concluded.
I'm saying, I'm basing it off of the deputies, and what they're saying is, we don't have anybody on night shift. I think that's important, and to support them during the day, we need somebody else too. So that's four, I'm not coming in and looking at like, Mark thinks we need this, is what do you need, and that's what they're saying. Before the election, I was talking to George Lorrens, and he said, he told Colonel, you guys need, I think he said, four to six more deputies. Just loves truck, truck style, a lot of activity there. Yeah, I mean, and you're talking about sheets and other truck stuff, truck fuel there, hotel, hotel, if we're gonna. I think we need to handle them in place before, hey, we have a lot of crime, let's try to get some deputies in there, so.
Anybody think we can argue?
Yes.
At the rate, we're going right now with the two deputies, those two deputies are ninety-nine percent reactive and not proactive.
Right, one of the things that's saying we seem to go through deputies here too.
I'm sorry?
We seem to go through deputies here.
Uh, well, you know, that's not necessarily a bad thing. You started out with Adam Beach and George Lorrens, Adam Beach moved to the art tech division because he was a great officer, great deputy.
Oh, we've had, I can't get away with people that have that.
Okay, so, um, he's been here since the inception, worked in January, tomorrow he interviews for a supervisor position, you know. Let's see, we had Sean Corley, we had Mike, Mike Motor.
For a while.
Afternoon shift, he was promoted to a P nine deputy because of his, his abilities. So it's, it's not that we're rotating down here so fast because they don't like it, it's because they're quality deputies, they're doing a great job, and they're having an opportunity for advancement there.
That was one of the things I was worried about, that we're running, that they're like, oh, look for something else.
So I think they have goals, career goals in mind, they work hard, and they're, they do a good job, and they're rewarded for their efforts. You can move into at the township deputy position, you can shot it down here.
Oh, yeah. And like I said, all of them have, that I've seen down here, that all of them have a very good job, and they're responsive, so.
And the community appreciates, and they improve their interaction.
Uh, we've had.
So I'm signing the curbs. Ms. McKee, any thoughts or comments?
No, I, I like the fact that, you know, you explained that how long it takes for us to get one. Going through the academy, I have family that are police officers and sheriffs, so I get it, and I understand that, and it takes them, you know, it takes a while for that to happen, and if we're gonna be proactive, I, I can see us bringing, you know, preparing ourselves to have that, those extra, that extra deputy, the series, the series will grow even more, so.
Yeah, so actually, with the way our county's growing, the sheriff's office is gonna be growing.
That's exactly right, sir.
So do we wanna move forward in approving the process of adding deputies?
We need to add, we do need to add a deputy.
You say A, so that too?
Yeah, so.
I'm asking a question. If we'll help each deputy, where two thousand twenty-two is costing a hundred and eight thousand, vehicles are about sixty thousand, vehicles last about three years, so that attributes about twenty thousand per year, so that's a hundred and twenty-eight thousand approximately per year for a deputy.
How much do we put in?
It's twelve to fourteen thousand a month right now.
No, no, I mean, how much do we put in, I can, but I have a bunch of numbers on that, you remember?
Well, we can move the, you put in, is that trash payment still on the budget, because we can move that over to.
Well, I added money for, I added one more deputy when I was looking at the budget, early on, I added money for that.
Well, we, we can, I, I'm just saying, we, we should base it on needs, I think we need two, the deputies that indicated that would be to their wish, but again, they're in a position where they can't say, but, you know, we have to do it, but I think there should be four and two protect our community.
It won't happen to all of us, so we have to prepare.
And the contract's up in twenty, thirty, correct?
No, the contract's up this year, December twenty, thirty-one, so.
Okay.
I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion to move forward to hire two additional deputies with the Lickie County Sheriff's Department, and amending the contract as required when those deputies and vehicles are available, is there a second?
Oh, second?
Just a few seconds, is there discussion?
Well, I had, I should, you can leave that up to them to decide, I shouldn't.
That, is, when I go to a baker to get a cake, I don't tell them how to make the cake, you, you give them the resources.
We decided last, that's what I'm asking for.
I say give them.
Well, there was discussion, we provided statistics.
Right, exactly.
I'd say let them, they know where their busy times, they know, now as far as special, like duties, uh, hey, concentrate on portrait plan, concentrate, we directed that, we're special duty, but I'm giving the resources and.
It'll be a set schedule, correct?
Yeah, it'll be a set schedule, now, we do, now, let me just point, when they are assigned or pointed to one of the positions down here, because this is the appointed position, this is not, anybody can get it, go through a very process, who knows, they can, you have to work by themselves, handle things on their own, deputy. So.
Bidding process.
Sorry.
We talked about shifts, shit shift.
Um, so we had, we broke, they are considered variable hours, variable days off, so if there's something special that's happening, on midnight shift, we know that every night, or every other night, that our car lots are getting broken into down here, we can, obviously, we've discussed with you, we can, we can move one of those deputies to a midnight shift position for a week to try to combat that specific problem, if that's, yeah. Okay, when we, for the most part, we've never really had to do that, however, it was on the table when we first negotiated, the first contract was, we set it up so that those deputies could move around, shifting days off, things that way, the best suit was needed for the, for at township. They know that pointing to that, generally speaking, I guess they have a set schedule.
Okay, that's all to be sure, like, just.
We'll, we'll, we'll move around.
Okay. Move around if you need to, but that'll be a set schedule.
Exactly.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much, and I'll be in touch with you.
Yeah, um, I'm supposed to be working on the contract in a minute, so I will give the prosecutor's office, you take care of that, I'll start that ball rolling.
Okay.
Um, and then I'll keep you in contact, I have your information, I have your contact, and I'll have your jet.
I can give it to you, no problem.
But I'll keep you apprised after moving through, and we'll start the process again with people hiring.
And until they get the car, can we do bikes or segways?
We've got, we've got cars, we're not for this, but we got.
All right, thank you again.
Thank you.
Susan here, and then if we quickly wanted to do the CARES Act, then we'll go back to old business, so I think it's related, uh, what does this?
So we're all back to old business?
The D, no, the D, because I think, do we wanna discuss, do we wanna appropriate those funds for the sheriff, the CARES Act funds? Yeah, the D.
The ARPS funds?
Is it ARPS or?
It's ARPA, it's ARPA.
It's ARPA, yeah, I don't know what.
It's fine, it's, it's pretty much all the same apart from.
Okay, so that, I mean, I don't know if the board wants to discuss if there's other options, but like I said, especially with us approving it, I think we should direct those funds to that. Is there any, you guys have any other ideas, or, again, we keep going with general funds, so it really doesn't matter, but.
Like I said, if you know, the budget that the post, that I already added once.
So was additional, so how about on the budget?
I added additional one.
Yeah, I did one.
On the five-year, on the budget I have, I have three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the sheriff's contract.
Oh.
Last year, well, the projection is actually a hundred and twelve thousand, no, wait, it's eighty-one thousand, last year we spent a hundred and three thousand. So we're well prepared for that, but going there, caution is, we're getting four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in ARPA money, and if we have three hundred and fifty thousand sheriffs, we still have extra to spend.
Well, we've got two years to spend, right?
Yes.
So do you do this year, next year, now?
Yes.
Is that what we wanna do? I don't think, we don't have to motion on it, we're just.
No, we'll have to draft a resolution.
We'll draft a resolution to draft that to them, okay, so that.
But I, I don't know that we should necessarily, it can be a little bit broader, you can add a couple of projects, you could say administrative costs, you could look, I mean, with the paperwork and the examples I sent you, we're, if, you know.
But does it really matter if we're just moving one money to another, it's, that can be general funds pretty much, so whether we pay sheriff by general.
But you do also need to list projects, so I'm just saying, kind of, we could kind of be broad, with something else maybe, so that the funds could be.
I'm thinking if we're doing two cars, it'll be about a hundred and twenty thousand, and then the sheriffs, that's gonna take care of that in two years.
I guess we, the cars are ours, is that correct?
Ours, but we have to get them.
Right, I'm thinking, okay.
We have to purchase them.
Right, so we have to purchase.
About sixty thousand.
Cars and one another. Here behind, I'm just, because here, you buy, the cars are down here.
For the other ones, they were two thousand and nineteen, they said about three thousand, however, the deputies in our, only patrolling us actually put less miles on them, so they might last longer, because the other ones are going clear or put out in the township, so. So we could do, if you want the resolution together on that, I think you had to draft a resolution, and so we'll just do that. All right, we'll go back to old business, comprehensive plan, A, I had planning next proposal and alternatives, and I just saw today some information from the prosecutors. Again, last time when I brought this up, there wasn't even any discussion. I, I did reach out, I originally got the proposal from Jim Leonard, this neighborhood's next, neighborhood search is next, and while I like Jim and that, he's been taking on a lot of clients and being a one-man show, I, I think we'd be better served with another company. Next planning that I found, we'll get the process going, or we can just dive in with them, I presented this to you guys last time, and they, they have quite a bit of staff that could be dedicated to this, a lot of resources, and actually a very big portfolio of diverse communities they, they've worked in, small, large, all over the country, and a couple around the world, Abu Dhabi. But they do city of El Prezo, city of Lebanon, I think we're bid down Lebanon, beautiful area, that's the direction I would say to go. I tried to get MKSK to respond and provide a bid, they were not responsive, as I indicated before, with intel going in, resources are just being snapped up, and again, one of my concerns with Mr. Leonard's company is, I believe he took on Grandville, a couple other clients, when he was here, he was saying he had maybe like three, four clients, I think he's at that more right now. So I, I, I saw, again, your email, this is the first I saw him proposing a contract with Mr. Leonard, so I wanna see what you guys have to say about planning next, Mr. Leonard.
I talked to Mr. Leonard this week, he said that he was, he was going to say if he took on this, that would make the end, he would not, he would not, no clients on.
How many does he have now?
He's not telling, but he said he could do this, and I, bro.
And he did, he, he stood, was he on the original comprehensive plan?
Yes. Where he, where he helped. It was, it was two parts, or somebody started. There was, there was two parts, or somebody started, or he started and then left, and so it was finished, or he finished it. I can't remember which way it was, but.
As employee, like he's on a plan.
Yes, as employee, we did not pay them for that.
Oh, okay.
It was something that was done, we appropriated some money in order to do a survey and some other things that we had, that we did, so the township employer paid for that, but there was nothing about paying the county planning group to do that, paid the debt, but then there were problems.
And you worked with him at the time, Jim?
Yeah.
Then how many employees does he have? Was it just him?
It's him, yes, it's just him.
And as, as I said, when he was here, I think he was at three or four clients, he said he would take one, maybe two more, and I know, I think he's taken two more since then. I, I honestly, no, I, if, if Jim just had one or two clients, I'd say, okay, but I don't think he's got the resources, especially doing it in a timely manner.
Well, I'll say this about it, he is on top of things around here, he knows what's going on around here. Cause he's working with other clients here, so he knows the information around here, and he knows how to use that with their plan and our plan. So I think that's a huge advantage, instead of pulling somebody from somewhere else and just bringing them in, and saying, here you go, we'll probably get some kind of canned package from them, and by guess, that they, they'll look through it, they're back there cleaning, they do the same thing, and all these places are, we got your road routes, they give you the motions, and then you come up with it.
Have you gone to their website, have you researched them?
No.
This is, and this is what's frustrating, I have to provide all this information to the board. I, I was specifically looking for someone that's not gonna do a canned response, a canned, but that's what this firm is, they're, they're more of a boutique firm that customizes things, and it's not just, you, not, every client's not gonna give the same reports with different graphs, or, uh, I'm, I'm very disappointed you didn't even research this. I provided the information to you. How are we gonna make an informed decision for our residents if we don't? I, I, I looked at Jim Leonard, and I, I've seen what he's doing up in Harrison Township, I've seen, like I said, up over at Granville is doing that, and again, he's taken on a lot, and he's one person, and for sixty one thousand dollars, he's, if he's at five, six clients, how is he gonna be able to devote the time? Our original comp plan took three years, we do not want that.
No.
They have the resources, like I said.
But they have, it's not one man. It wasn't, it wasn't any kind of, oh, it took three years either.
No, what I'm saying, it, it's, and it doesn't have to be planning next, but these resources are being snapped up by everybody around Intel. The, the longer we wait, and I, again, at this point, you didn't even look at this company. And you're ready to propose us hiring.
Well, let me, let me just say this, I think what we should, need to do when we get these reports, I mean, that's what those work sessions are for. We need to take advantage and use those work sessions in our community. What work sessions are, is you meet with the, with the residents, like we're doing right now, and we go over this kind of stuff, and we discuss it openly, and then in our next meeting, it'd be less discussion, and then you can go on. Those are, that, that is something you, we, we need to take advantage of more often, because like I said, we didn't get that information to research it, so.
No, I, I honestly, that they offered to come here, I did not want to waste their time, because if you weren't gonna review it, I would, just like everybody that we interviewed for administrative positions, I felt that was a waste of time, because nothing was gonna be done. This, you're talking about, we, we've had this on the agenda so many times, we've had so many, so much.
I understand.
Let me just please, but I sent this all to you, email links, this, I put a lot of effort in this to provide the information, and you guys don't even.
Wait a minute.
Read that, or?
That's not true.
I'm sorry, you don't, some of the stuff you haven't, but Mr. Johnson mostly, uh, he did make a comment one time, all my emails are interfering with his job, which I've gotta compile this, I've gotta research this, I put a lot of time in this, and this is the firm I believe in, and you won't even give them the time to read this.
Back to what I said.
Their website.
I do more research than look at it. But hey, that's what the work sessions will, will implement this in the future. And so, and anything, Mark, cause you sit there and you go, this, 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 you have to give me a lot of information about how this is doing exactly with us. I mean, I can read that, that's fine, and I appreciate that you give us everything we need to know about it.
Hey.
But the same thing, if you want that, I need to look at that special, you need to sell it to us.
Have you, I haven't talked to the individual here, you could have talked to the individual here. Their website, when it comes up, we are not like other planning firms, we, it goes through, they, they've got a great website, a lot of resources, but here's exactly how they outline how they can start helping with the workshop, with talking to the residents, with, and this is just first step.
Yeah.
And if you choose to go through this and be like, well, we wanna go with somebody else, or somebody else, we're gonna package together. But again, if you're not even going to consider it, but I, I talked to Mr. Leonard, I talked to, I'm the one that got the original proposal for him, and I would have loved to, but he's too busy, and he's a one man show, in anything, he's got his opinion. You've got all these people's opinions, that they could say, what about that, no, I think they really need to do this on a board, or, or. Again, you guys can outvote me, do anything you want, I, I was disappointed to see that this was gonna be pushed tonight, I just got it a couple hours before the meeting. And I provided this to you a month or a month and a half ago.
Didn't you have this? Didn't you have Mr. Leonard's, you know, information? In fact, you're the one who just told me, you, you're the one that got it initially, so you always had that information.
Yes, I mean.
You're the hell's we gave you for it.
Right, and I said, he, he's too busy. So once, he was in, you don't even know how many clients he has right now. I, he has more than he had last time. So. What I will, I'll make a motion to proceed with the planning next proposal to start the comprehensive plan review. Is there a second?
What is that?
That's for discussion.
But you said one last second, didn't you?
I make a motion to approve and accept the planning next proposal as presented, um, to start the comprehensive plan process. Is there a second? Second only means extension. Well, but I made a motion, so either there needs to be a second or it dies. Last chance for a second. Second time it dies. Anything else?
Wrong.
Well.
I'll make a motion that we, I, you want to talk about Jim Leonard, Leonard, there, his company. I'll second the motion. I'm gonna make a, it's a motion that we, we entered a contract with Mr. Leonard to write our comprehensive plan, right? And I'll second.
So discussion? I, I'm shocked you're gonna make this decision without even reviewing the other proposal, that you've had for over a month. I'm shocked that you don't even know how many clients he has, Mr. Johnson, and you, you wanna go with the one man show. This is our future, we should be a little bit more deliberate about this, I would at least think you would know how many clients he has. This is totally the wrong direction of this, uh, again, if Mr. Leonard had only one other client, fine. But we need to move past prior way we operated. I mean, the way this township is operating, if you look into that side boardroom, all those boxes, they've been sitting there for over five years, not addressed, not just left to go, we gotta stop operating like this. And you just wanna throw out this proposal for sixty one thousand two hundred dollars, which isn't really. Has a prosecutor reviewed this?
Yes.
He's approved it?
Uh-huh. He made changes, I contacted Mr. Larry, he's already had the changes, I mean, the changes to the service contract here that you have, personal service contract.
How, is there, is there a reason I just got this like hours before the meeting? How long were you working on this?
Well, it's finishing up, I just got it back from the prosecutor today.
I, I, this, this is just, to make a decision without even looking at the other options, I, I think we should just continue in the direction we passed. Nothing against Mr. Leonard again, he's just, he's too busy. And if we wanna wait for two years, he already said it's, he'll be here, that was when he had two or three clients.
He'll be here anyway, that's just how they.
Well, now he's doubled his clients.
Oh, I'm sorry, it takes a year. The year is the problem, us meeting, the people meeting that are involved with that, it's not like he just sits up there and writes it, it's the meetings in here, the empty township, that he was gonna put a survey out, do other things, that all takes time.
Did you look into Harrison Township, how that was progressing and?
They were.
How they did the survey and? I was a little disappointed in that, because it was an online survey, and not that many people responded, I, I.
That's even better, because we can learn what they did on the table.
Well, you know, my objection, I, I, I think this should be table to, until you at least review the other proposal.
I saw enough of it. I mean, I said, I saw enough of it, I just didn't do research on it, until you asked if I do research, I said no.
You, you read all that?
No.
But you went to the website, and you talked.
I did not give a, I did not do research, or what did you say?
I, I've provided you contact information, additional, I mean, this isn't all inclusive of everything they, they do. If you need to do research, speak to people, just like our people we interview, I'll call them and talk to them for two hours beforehand, cause I wanna know as much as possible, I still think you're making a decision on that one. I, I think, I disagree, I think this should be table.
If there's a motion out before.
It is.
We call.
Well, point of order. I'll call for the question.
All right, roll call.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Ms. Mickey?
Yes.
All right, administrator status, uh, let's talk about this, status of the business. We've been talking about this forever, we interviewed four people last time after the other board, you guys canceled the first interviews. We have two sitting resumes, uh, in here, uh, one was since March twenty first. Is there gonna be action to interview these individuals? I would like to interview them, cause I think we need a full-time administrator, um, and we, we've had many quality candidates, and we've had five pull out because of what's going on, and I know five others that didn't apply because of what they decided. So I would like, I spoke to one of the candidates, uh, today, uh, I think she would be a great, uh, possible candidate, uh, her salary requirements are on a, a lower end of the spectrum, uh, which I, I think is nice, she's got experience in it. Do you know what I'm speaking about, or have you, have you seen the resume?
No.
Have you seen that resume?
I wanna put the all words.
So one, one.
Yep.
What do you think about her? Her experience?
She has, she has some experience, she came from another township.
So do we wanna interview her? And I guess Greg Reese, our Department of Zoning Appeals Chairman, has submitted his application, I'm planning on interviewing him too. Have you seen his resume?
Yes.
Have you?
Oh, yeah.
I'm just, I'm just making sure we're on the same page.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So are we, so are we gonna interview them? Cause Miss Bruno is available for any days and times, um.
You still want full time, I'm looking at a contracted position for a couple of days. You get started. You're saying we're so far behind, you just need to get started.
Right, and higher.
If someone comes back around this contract that I'm looking at, it's the William Vance, we could, he could be gone whenever. It's a day to day, yeah, what it is, it's a day to day.
Miss, uh, Miss Bruno has offered, uh, she's the second one that said she would do it part-time, the other one.
I indicated to you.
As a contract?
There was no action, that was, that Miss, Miss Bruno indicated no contract required, part-time, full-time, temporary.
She's still an employee, correct?
She is, as an employee at what? And she has township experience, uh, she, she worked as acting township administrator in Jackson Township, it's a very large township.
Down, 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 for, for city.
Thirty million dollar budget.
And she went to work for Franklin County, right?
She worked for Franklin County, cause she wanted to change, been to courts, you know, something bigger, better, but she's, she learned that, and she left there voluntarily, that that's not what she enjoyed, uh, just like when I was talking to the lieutenant regarding officers, many, there's several that come from, uh, Columbus, making six figures, that came to Lincoln County, making less, but they enjoy it more. That's what she did, uh, and she wants to come here, she actually interviewed for our position a long time ago, uh, it might have been with Rock Platte, uh, but she's dealt with, again, the thirty million dollar budget township, uh, act as, acted as, uh, acting township administrator for a short period of time, she didn't want that position at the time, she was assistant township administrator to human resources, public information office, uh, deals with records requests. I mean, it, it's quite extensive, and talking to her, I was very impressed, uh, there's also a lot of candidates that I would still consider, but you two won't, so I think this is a good alternative. Again, I think she should at least be interviewed, uh, and as far as the contractor goes, are you proposing, uh, the W O B LLC, right? That is the one the individual spoke out against, uh, I have sent you numerous information about, uh, he was fired twice, Bill Vance in Florida, uh, one time for releasing improper public records, another time for, uh, failing to live up to his duties and that. There's also a case with, uh, more, more stuff down there, people can look. I've also spoke into a lot of people, including Miss Melissa Wild, uh, and others in the area, and they are outstandingly, uh, the arms.
I talked to.
I love.
I did, I mean, I did, I did too, Mark, I talked to, to six references over there.
Okay, and I will tell you that initially, when I talked to people, it was all good, and then when I found out specific information, I asked them about that information, it was, oh, you know about that? Well, it's just like when, when someone leaves a job, nobody's gonna trash you, nobody's, cause you don't want that, you don't want that.
Trash you.
But, but yeah, when you offer a reference, most people aren't gonna give you the truth, because they don't wanna get in it, but I'm saying, there are so many red flags with between firings in Florida, between, I mean, it's in the newspaper, I gave you guys the articles.
You did, and I googled it even when you gave it to me.
Please. And even I gave you the two individuals that know him very well, their information, and you two have not talked to them. That's disappointing. Uh, the one, uh, the fiscal officer who's, who's assisting our fiscal officer is, has said, if we hire him, she's stopping any work with us.
Yeah, he did send us that email, so basically.
Yes, and, and she reiterated that tonight, which I think that, that should send a big signal to, to you guys, and I, I still, I ask, I'd like to know where you got his information, like, how do you come?
You keep asking, I told you, I'm a board, I'm a board member of Orksey, Orksey has a bunch of professional mayors, trustees, uh, all professionals that come to those meetings.
Well, he was trying out, he was trying to get out of it by the township, and the local political party guy was trying to get him hired on there, the party was pushing, and they refused, by the township refused to take him on. The party was pushing him, they refused, Violet Township refused to take him on. Now, there's so many red flags with this. There's so many other options. And again, we have an individual, two, but one that is really qualified. This is what she did and is willing to do part-time, full-time, not even contract. Employment, oh, you don't like her after two months, get rid of her. And you guys haven't even spoken to her.
I want you to understand, Mark, that Mr. Vance, okay, you said all these things about him, and it seems like everybody that you don't agree with, we trash them, we include them, okay? So, I'm just saying.
Fired Lauderdale by the city town manager, fired by the commission citing problems with his management of the town. Commissioners removed Lloyd Vance. Vance was deficient in the way he communicated to the commission, showed erratic management, failed on budget issues, was not as present in the town as he should have been, lacked a full understanding of the town's issues. Commissioners started to notice problems after Vance's review. Late late commissioner has fired city manager Bill Vance, five to zero. If you want to ignore all that...
Mark, you lied on Facebook. Same exact thing, so we should leave all that too.
Believe it, these are...
I'm saying that's why you're better than individuals all the time.
I mean, these are news articles from the individuals. Is he here to talk? I asked him, he sent in, which was odd, and I asked last time, did he apply as administrator, as employee? And I was told no, but he sent in a letter taking himself on...
Is this a discussion?
No, this is a discussion. This is discussions. So I asked him, Mark, did you take back your proposal for as a consultant? He would not answer. A simple yes or no, he would not answer. He's not here tonight to answer questions. Why?
Let me ask a question, did you madmouth him publicly on social media? That's a yes or no question.
I raised my concern.
I'm just asking a question. And I'm asking for a reason, Mark, maybe that's why he didn't respond to you. I'm just saying yes or no.
No, he did respond, he would not answer the question, yes or no. It was lengthy dodging of the answer. And again, I didn't make this up, but did you talk to the commissioners down there? Did you reach out?
Oh yeah, absolutely.
You've talked to these individuals that fired?
I spoke to three people in Florida and three people up here.
That fired?
Six, six people on his references that he referred. And I talked to some other people from the city that he didn't use as a reference. Because I'm not that, you know, I have some sense, Mark, whether you want to believe it or not. So you don't always go by references, it's always somebody's, you know, somebody that agrees with you. But I went around and asked others that didn't, that was not a part of his reference.
But I'm saying you did not contact the people.
It doesn't matter who I contacted, as long as they worked for the city in those townships, and they gave good references, that's all, that's what I did. I just did my diligence by going back and checking those.
I spoke to people from Pickerton and Violet Township that had direct interaction with them.
Did you speak to anybody else?
Yes, many. And they all warned against. There's claims of sexual harassment, there's claims... You want to bring that in here? And again, our contractor helping our fiscal officer is no longer going to help if he's hired. Now, doesn't that send a signal to this board?
So why would you do that now?
How do you know that? She's calling you on the phone, she's not even coming in the building.
Melissa Wild tonight, just...
We've been here, oh, we've been here every weekend for the whole time, weekends.
Oh, really? Oh, okay, I didn't know that. So you guys have been here on the weekends, you and Vanessa working together?
Yes.
Okay.
Saturday and Sunday.
Okay, okay.
Melissa Wild and Vanessa Nekem, I provided their information to you and you to talk to them about this, and you two did not reach out to them. I have other individuals that were impacted, but I'm not going to drag them into this process. So are we interviewing the other two candidates?
I'm going to make a motion that we enter a contract with WMV LLC, Lloyd Vance.
Will you get mad at me? I'm a second.
For two days' week.
I, there doesn't have to be discussion, but this is not what the voters voted for, the change. Proper administration of this township. You're bringing in, I believe, in my opinion, a liability. There are other individuals that have stated they will help. And one with great experience and that could do it for much cheaper.
Point of order, I'm going to, I'll call for the question.
For about, just, you don't have to point where you just told them.
I'll call for the question.
So where's the contract? You're just...
They're entering a contract. I'll get approved by the prosecutor.
What contract? I think we need to have the contract in front of us. And isn't the contract going to be reviewed by the prosecutors? Because I don't have a contract.
It said he suggested that the board trustees take action to request that Mr. Vance submit an appropriate proposal for contract documents, which sets forth the terms and conditions. That to my prosecutor.
So the prosecutor stated that we should ask Mr. Vance to provide a contract so he can review it. So you're making a motion to approve the contract? He hasn't even provided to be reviewed.
Why is it entered into a contract?
But if you don't have a contract, how are you going to enter into it?
I'm going to have the prosecutor approve it, then after that, is that what you're saying?
Typically, typically you have to approve contracts or a contract after you have it. Right now, you want us to approve a blank piece of paper?
Sometimes you don't have a contract, you start out, you just get happy.
That's true, you can motion for somebody to be hired, yes you can.
So wouldn't it be appropriate, again, proper procedure, have a contract here that's been reviewed by our prosecutor to vote on?
Did you send a contract to the prosecutor? Was there presented a contract to the prosecutor yet, Mr. Johnson?
I sent it up there, and it was based on this letter I sent to him. He sent it back to me today. Again, I sent it back today about...
Was there ever a contract presented though?
No. But he said, I made a motion to get a contract.
Okay.
And have it reviewed by them.
So do you want to amend your motion to request a contract? I don't think you need a motion, you just have to ask them for a contract, present it to them. It's your motion. I don't think it's appropriate to vote on a contract that's not available. Or it exists, because the terms are here.
I mean, I've listed these things, what you'll include, what you'll do.
But that's not what the prosecutor said. So if you want to go against what the prosecutor said, you can...
So I mean, let's all get a contract together, that's what you're saying.
So are we going to table this? Do you want to draw your motion?
You want to wait another couple of weeks or do you want to have a special meeting or presented or what?
I'd like to do a proper, have a contract in front of us. But again, you guys can vote any way you want, that's, again, proper administration of this township. Your motion's on the floor, what do you want to do?
So to take action, and Mr. Vance submitted a proposal, so I amend my motion.
I don't think you can amend your own.
Is there a petition you want?
No, I don't think you need a motion to ask them for a contract to get it reviewed. Present a contract next. You don't need more actions to receive a contract. Ms. McKee, said make a motion.
No, 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 I'm reading something here.
Do you want a tabled motion? Do you want to... I mean, I would think you should at least show up and ask, answer questions.
Mark, let me just say this, I think your approach to an head of trustee, you know, is kind of rude. You know, we have to be respectful, just like the gentleman said earlier today. We have to respect each other, work together. And you kind of make Jeff, you know, myself, you know, the way you are, I would use the word bullying, intimidating, and you don't work with us. Everything that you brought forth is what you want. It's not what we want, because everything we bring up, you want to tear it down. You want to come negative on it. Oh yeah, it's bad. Then you go out on social media and continue it. That's unprofessional. Several people stood in this podium and said, very unprofessional.
We're doing this subject.
It doesn't matter, it's still...
You called the question, so there should be a vote on the question. Are we voting on a non-existent contract? Or is it still a discussion, Mark?
It's still a discussion.
At least, well, she called the question, it should be a vote, but again, on a non-existent contract.
It's still a vote. That's what you just said.
In case somebody in here says you can still vote on it.
No, you said that, there's a vote out there, that's what you said.
I'm just trying to keep us on the rails of doing what's right.
So if we enter into a contract, if we...
You're, what, let me see, you're trying to lock us into something that we don't have in front of us. I understand what you're trying to do, however...
Here's the proposal, you have the proposal for right here.
That's not a contract.
No, I know. But the idea is that we get a contract, it's approved by our legal people, and that's what I'm asking for.
And then at that time, would be the appropriate time to vote on a contract? When it's been approved by the prosecutor and sent right here? I mean, again, the way the township's been run, look in that room, that's how this township has been run.
Mark, stop that, that has nothing to do with it, stop it.
I'll draw my motion, and so they get the contract, what do you call it, special meeting?
So we can do special meetings, okay? So I'll draw my motion, and you two can just have special, you don't need me to have a special meeting.
Why?
Because it only takes two to call a special meeting.
That's right.
That point?
Yeah, so you withdraw your motion?
Yes.
Alright, motion is ready. Pavement management group proposal. Mr. Johnson, Ms. McKee, have you read this information? I brought this up at the last, one of the last meetings, and you said you needed more time to review it.
You'll table it, I remember, yeah, yeah.
Have you reviewed it?
Absolutely.
Do you have questions?
Question is that we did it prior to having that system in place. Just the person from the garage, one of the employees, took care of it.
Correct.
I know I'm correct on that.
However, as Violet Township uses Patastola, this is transitioning to this, they review the roads very meticulously. They present conditional roads. They present an escu. Roads are at sixty percent, do you want to maintain at seventy percent, eighty percent budget? This is, this is what you need to do to your roads. So it's not just haphazard, let's do this development, let's do that on this yearly schedule. There's various maintenance requirements that you, maintenance...
Don't use your umbrella.
Is there an umbrella?
My mom thinks you're too.
So they go through and determine, and based on your budget, use your money in the best method available. I think it's a small cost to have that. And it also, it takes them three days to go through all our roads. So if Bob is going to be inspecting all our roads, it's going to take his time too. This is a, every other year, they'll scan the roads. Every year, there's a small maintenance fee of fifteen hundred dollars to deal with that year's budget. So the total cost would be fifteen thousand dollars over two years, seventy-five hundred dollars to have an actual pavement management service dealing with our roads. We're getting more and more roads. Again, looking, just because we've done things in the past don't mean we need to do them in the future.
True. So it's going to take, it's going to take three days if Bob has done too?
No, it's three days for their car to go around digitally, capture all the roads. And did, are you familiar with this? Did you watch the videos of what they can do?
I know, I've used it on my research.
Okay, well they've got a lot of information online with that. There's, if you have to complain that whatever, addressing a question, and you see the video from that road, they analyze, is it weight, is it, you know, sun damage, is it, and again, pull together the best method and most efficient use of your funds. And I believe they use this on a key, and they've improved their roads and with their, in conjunction with their budget. Because you can spend your budget in many different ways, just resurfacing, just, but they'll give you a grab and say, do you want to maintain your roads a little better overall condition for your residents? This is how much you have to spend. You can save this much or you allow this much. And they'll map out what roads, what... I think it's a no-brainer for the small amount of funds that it costs. And I've talked to Patastola, like I said, Hill High's over there, said they're moving to this, Violet Township's very happy with this, and that other places. Again, are we going to continue just doing like we had before? And Bob is more than capable of saying what condition the roads are, so. But this is a definitive way of doing it on an ongoing basis.
The reason I asked a question for the residents is because I wanted you to know the difference between that versus what has been going on, okay? I don't just ask you because I'm trying to be against him. I'm asking so you guys can understand what this is all about, okay? That's why I do that. I mean, he gets upset thinking I'm trying to go against him, but I just...
I'm explaining it, and as the prior board left without transition, we didn't have anything on the books of this year. Again, it didn't even apply for the OPWC grant for the proper east side. So we're out that, so we got to determine what we're doing with the roads, and this is, I think, the best way. And they could start working on this, and we could use it for this season's repaving. I mean, if we don't do it now, what's the delay? What's the, again, we gave away over a million dollars last year, I'm paying trash in that. Fifteen thousand dollars for services that we need to provide to our residents, I don't understand it.
I'm going to give away money, give it back to citizens.
Seven hundred, seven hundred thousand to the fire department, six hundred and sixty thousand in the bridge and road levy suspension for one year.
It's back to residents, fire department, back to residents.
Right, but, but, but trash.
Trash back to the residents.
Not to all residents, but we're supposed to be providing services to them. And if we can't in an efficient way, because our roads need to be monitored more with all the truck traffic, that we're going to have an increased repair cycle and maintenance cycle. They will be able to monitor...
I wouldn't say I was against this one, I wouldn't say I was against this.
But that's what, but that's what I'm trying to explain.
You asked a question, then you're against the right, that's what you have to make. Mine. Can I ask Bob a question?
Sure.
Okay. Bob, you read through this, right? You read this for sure?
No.
You haven't seen it all, you haven't shared it with him?
He shared it with me, but I didn't read through it at all.
Okay, so I guess you... Okay. So I guess before, we just, you remember how it used to go, right? They hit the roads and seven-year plan or ten-year plan will pay the roads on an operating basis, right? And that plan has gotten behind, or are we still on that plan, or are we just kind of?
We just haven't.
What about analyzing?
We just haven't paid the, the.
Right. So who goes out and was analyzing the roads the last couple of years? You were. And how long do you think it took you to do that?
I mean, I do it daily. I'm out and I check roads every single day.
Okay. So this plan wouldn't save you any time, or like, they'd just give you a?
No, it just, just help you, you want to evaluate everything. I mean, that's why.
It's taken way, way from you.
That's why, that's why we're not reading, because they're going to do the job when.
Because I mean, your time is valuable. It's township. We should have you doing things other than, because I didn't know you spent like weeks going out looking at all the roads, you know, like.
We do it daily.
Yeah, daily. Okay.
He probably sees the roads and he's thinking. Well, my, my thing with this too is they will give cost estimates of what it should cost. You, you're going to track, so you're going to do this, you're going to go. They'll put that in there so you can kind of gauge your budget and then get proposals, and so you know they're kind of all part of that. And again, for seventy-five hundred dollars a year, with our, with the payments we do, and it's going to be on an increased cycle. We can't just say every site, seven years, we're going to do something because these trucks are going to bury this road sooner, maybe better. And that preventive maintenance, it's also about extending the life of it. So they'll say, do this, spend this, you know, extend it for another year, another year and a half. Don't spend it, then you will replace it now. That's what I'm saying.
That's what I was talking about. It's beneficial to you, and you thought you could use it if you're, if you do. I know we can use it to make better decisions, but I don't.
But I think it would help with budgeting, with Julie, of being able to have projections. So I'll make a motion to approve the contract, uh, as proposed, by Pavement Management Services, um, dated March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Is there a contract to this?
On the second page, I think, is the proposal. And I just have all the information behind it. So is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
McKee seconds. So discussion. All right, rule call.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Social media, uh, presence for township, this was on a previous agenda item. I think it's important. I know there's detractors to social media, and getting the word out, uh, to people is good. So I think that's what we should use it for. Uh, that contract, content should be, uh, neutral. It's just as far as displaying events that's going on. Uh, no kind of disagreements with boards or anything like that, if there are concerns about that. So if you guys have, uh, you said you want tablets, I have some thought on it.
Yep.
Have you guys, uh, have questions, discussion on this? Because one of the things I had, like the fireworks, even though there were fireworks, a lot of people didn't know. It's about trying to get information out. So if we have that, like every other township, we can post things going on. I'd like to use the park more. Most events there are post park less, and it's just a way to reach people. Uh, not everybody goes to check our website all the time.
Well, discussion is, we'll have a website, we'll have a social media page. Who are, who's going to maintain that page?
Well, if we have a ministry, a ministry.
Okay. All right. Just wanted to make that clear. So.
And it, it should be only for township events. Again, it's not, if I have a disagreement with you, I'm not going out there saying I disagree with you. That's not the place for it.
Okay, that's good to hear.
It should be for township events, of what's going on, what's for the community, who built it.
Right. Yeah. That's what it should be. You have to.
Well, I'll, I'll make.
Well, we have a webpage. So we just want.
But who goes, who checks the webpage?
We don't.
Social media is, it drives it to the people. You, you see that in your feed of, oh, Edna Township's doing this, this, Edna Township.
Facebook is what he's talking about, like.
Facebook, uh, you two, you want to start?
Yeah. And then you drive, yeah, we do have a website, we do. But people don't jump on websites, uh, maybe look for an address or a phone number. But if you have a social media page, you can see the current of what's going on in your township. But he said, well, we, whatever we end up with, we'll have to maintain it or manage it. So.
Or create it.
Yeah, it's simple. It's just, yeah, they're created as well.
It's easy to create, and you could get a government, get listed as government, approved, so they know it's you. I, I, I just think it's a good way to be transparent, public, post things into. They could decide if they want those updates in their feeds or not.
Well, while we're discussing, uh, Facebook and township, you know, I noticed, you know, Mark, you posted a lot of stuff on Etna Community, I think it's what, yeah.
Uh, Community Base.
Yeah, and you have it down there as Mark Evans slash Township trustee, just to make it clear to the, to the residents. It's not re. Yeah, right. He's not representing the township, just to make it clear. He's not representing me as a trustee. He's not representing the board. That's his all opinion.
Okay, with respect. He has Etna Township as his name, so he is.
And he accused people of being corrupt, but no evidence. So I, I, I understand, but this is not the discussion, but.
But it's, we're, we're talking about this because I don't want, like, the residents to think that this new page that we're going to put out there is going to have that kind of content out there. It's not going to be for anybody to mark himself, Evans, to go out there and bash us, or himself, or, or anybody else.
Will that people be able to post on it?
No.
We could, we could.
We can turn that off. We can turn it off.
We can turn off comments. We can, so it's, it's a place that can be for announcements, for.
Or we get high comments that.
No, you can't, no, no, no. You have to get into, uh, the, uh, the records policy and stuff, and you can't delete. If you're going to delete a comment, you're going to capture it. So if you, if you do comments and, um.
So basically, it's a difference in tweet, what you're saying. You're putting stuff out there.
You're putting stuff out there. You can put agendas, if you don't choose to. Or unless, unless you choose. So, uh, but as far as my personal Facebook page, as, as canon trustee, it's clearly noted that it is mine, it's not the township, just as your McKee grid, the Township trustee. And your endorsements of businesses aren't endorsements by the township. So it's the same thing.
No. No, you're actually posting stuff that's current, that's going on in our township. Maybe a meeting that didn't go your way, and you go out to the township, I mean, to Etna Community and post as a trustee, because that's what residents are saying, is he's posted as a trustee. So they think it's, you know, but you do live on a page.
It says Mark Evans, Etna trustee.
I, I'm very involved, I'm very involved in that, where I'm, so, here, please do not.
Yeah. So I think maybe you should remove that part of it. You, you're tied to your own opinion as a resident.
I have free speech, right?
You do. That's what, you do.
Just say that, just like, just like when you talk to a resident at their residence. I am Ross McKee, Etna Township trustee. We're talking about this social media.
Social media, okay. So you're always saying, there's other places, give me some places I can go with. Because I never go out on social media pages.
Well, this would be ours, but if you buy the township as one.
I have a has one.
Genoa Township, Orange Town, like, whatever township will.
So everybody has one except for us?
I love speaking about.
Pretty much.
Pretty much, yeah.
It's the way people communicate now with the information. So I, I don't want to drag this out. This, I thought would be a simple thing. I'm going to make a motion to adopt the social media guidelines as presented. Is there a second? Is there a second? It's died.
I'll move up, look at these other sites.
So you just want to table it again? Is that what you're saying, Jeff?
Yeah.
Well, I, nobody's seconded it, so.
Hey, you can bring it up next week.
You can bring it back, you can bring it back. We're going to move on to old business annexation inquiries. And, uh, just, you know, uh, inquiries in action by, uh, City of Reynoldsburg outside the annexation agreement. Uh, I found out that, uh, City of Reynoldsburg and their officials, including mayor, has met with, uh, the school district, encouraging them to get us to work with them on that annexation. Again, outside the agreement. They're, uh, talking to the developers, which I think is inappropriate. Again, they're, they're required to defend the agreement we have, which limits them to annexation. Uh, prior, uh, I, uh, Elbers and Elbers is looking at a law firm that would defend that. The cost would be paid for through the Jeds. Uh, we have new representation now, Brochus and Briggs. Uh, Peter Briggs said he would draft a letter to the City of Reynoldsburg and also the developer outlining the, uh, the requirements of maintaining that agreement. And, and any, uh, liability for violating that. So I just want the board of residents to know that that, that they're pushing that. Uh, and want to see what your positions are of, uh, are you willing to fight the, this improper, uh, attempted annexation outside the agreement?
Why are you looking at me like that?
Well, because I, I'm one person on this board, I need, I need support from one more to move forward on stuff. And if, if I don't have the support, we, we can't do it. So what I want to know is, do I, do I have the support from this board to fight this annexation outside the agreement by Reynoldsburg?
I'll go back beyond the non-annexation part of it. I don't want, we gave them basically a large sum of money in tax. Instead of all that particular, on those Jeds, and we continue to do it in exchange for that agreement.
Right, right.
So they should honor that, in my opinion.
They do, they do not want to, and the mayor, the mayor has met with the school, the developers, they, they're looking to, the developer may try to sue, I mean, this is, we're allowed to have that annexation agreement for all we're seeing. Uh, and again, they have to defend it with us. They would defend it that way, I believe. They'd like to see it blown up. Uh, I'm just disappointed in Reynoldsburg again. I, I was talking to one of their officials, where they said last election, they were going to run two candidates, they decided to run just one. They feel like they should have control over board to influence annexation because they want to annex one. So this is just another attempt at that. Uh, so if, if I have your support, and Mr. McKee, are you in support of fighting this annexation?
As long as, yeah, of course I am.
Okay.
We, we speak with our.
Oh, they're saying.
It's all south of the school.
Yeah.
District, right?
Yeah.
And more like this, since the schools are there, that would want to get a housing.
They're, they're trying to talk the schools into giving them an abatement on a property that they annex. I think that discussion is just improper, because it shouldn't even go in there. They're limited to a small area that they can annex. This is outside of it.
A lot of work, yes.
They want to put two, they want to, they want to put two warehouses right next to Bowman Road Community.
Yeah, yeah.
So against that, but really against us. We paid them off to not annex us, and now they're doing this. I'm very disappointed in Reynoldsburg on this. So as long as, uh, you've got your blessing, continue with Pete Briggs and, and the, uh, enforcing.
I thought it was a way to win for Reynoldsburg, just to work together with them. On these Jeds, that, that, either they get money, stop the annexation. Right. Because I know they, they would dream with City of Reynoldsburg, they'd all the way to make, not Reynoldsburg, Water Sewer District of Columbus, but they go all the way to make.
But if they annex, they get a hundred percent of the tax money, not just twenty. That's what they're.
Right. Oh, I understand that.
So. They entered the agreement, they got to live by it. But I want to ensure that they're, that it's enforced. So, uh, then the new business email system.
Are we, we didn't finish with old business one?
Well, I'm going to.
Okay.
That was added last, I'll, we'll trust it last. Uh, newbusinessemailsystem, document storage, public records, as again, over there, been sitting there over five years. We need to deal with that. The email system, again, we're getting numerous records requests. Uh, and we need a better way to produce those and that. Uh, so I want to see what the board's pleasure is. I know, Mr. McKee, you, uh, your campaign, you're an IT computer management professional. Is this something that you can handle?
When you say handle, what do you mean by that, Mark?
Implement the system, yeah.
That's not what I, I'm a trustee. I can actually get a contractor in here to implement it. I'm not here to do an implementation of a system. That's not my job. Okay? So that's, let's clear that up, because that's not my job.
So you're not willing to do that?
No, I'm not willing to do that, because that's not what I'm here to do. I'm a trustee, but I can actually work with a company, just like the rest of the townships all across, um, Ohio. Have a contractor, a consultant, comes in and does like we have now. Same thing we have now, but that person's not under a contract. But there's some new things that we need to do and must do in the township, as far as our system is concerned.
Right. And my, my concern is that.
And you're not, no, I will not do that. That's not my job, Mark.
Okay.
But I'm willing to work with a contractor, consultant coming to do, to implement, absolutely.
Okay, can I speak?
Sure.
Our, our job is men in this township. There's some, some trustees that, I, I know one at the OTA conference that when he got hired, they're like, you're a CDO with us. We plow the roads. We, we needed, uh, some salt on the roads and, and plowing. I plowed those roads. I didn't say, I'll hire a contractor.
Mark, you're not familiar with you.
I'm not speaking, please. We need to do what, what's necessary. And again, yet, another one of your degrees is public administration. Like, why can't we figure this out and, and address that? I'm, I'm spending endless hours on this stuff. I just worked for the first time this last week, four months. So I'm putting all this effort in. I don't know why you're refusing to. We need to get this email system set up. We need to deal with document storage. We need to deal with public records and this. It seems like it's in your wheelhouse. I don't understand why you're not. You refused, that's fine.
I, I have a full-time job too, Mark. I'm a bit long. Okay? And I'm not saying I won't do it. I said I would work with somebody and get somebody in here to do the work, just like we have to bring Linner in or this other company in, same thing.
Okay.
Just bring a contractor and let them.
Do you have a contractor that would do this then?
I, I do, absolutely. I sure do. And I've been talking to them. In fact, I got a meeting with them this, next Thursday. Yep, I got a meeting next Thursday with them at, uh.
Okay, well, I don't, the date, time's important.
Okay.
I think we need to work with it. Again, it's.
Next Tuesday, sorry.
And regarding the, the document source stuff, we need more to start going through that. She is having trouble doing minutes, because these meetings are going long, and dealing with that. Again, over five years, I've been told, that's been in there. It needs to be addressed, so I think we either need to hire someone temporarily to do the minutes and help out, help us while the work is red with that, or both. But to just let that sit and let everything else sit is, I think, their election duty. So.
And that stuff all came from the garage, when we're picking up the garage, it doesn't make.
So it just, it's temporary storage.
Until it just sat up there, so we moved it here.
Well, we have to go through those and.
And I think what was.
Destroy them. And that was part of, no, she inventoried half of them. And it's inventory, but now you've got to go cross-reference it to how long they have to be held for, presented to the West, like Historical Society, but are going to store them, which, it's, again, that, that's indication of state of public township, and so we need to deal, start dealing with these things. So I, I'm glad to hear your, your talk to somebody, but the records requests, there are systems in place. I asked Bill Ici, as part of our Microsoft three sixty-five accounts. There is, uh, the e-discovery on there through AppRiver. Why are we using that? One person should be able to search all emails. Uh, so we need to get that, or are you saying you would take that on?
Oh, we're good as contractor, yeah, yeah. That I'm looking at, I'm happy to see that, what they can do. And I'm pretty sure they can do it. It won't be a problem.
Okay, so.
Now, Bill, Ici is not under a contract, and this person would want a contract. Because Bill Ici, we're just paying him whenever we call.
Hundred fifty dollars?
Yeah, he's not happy with that. I think he wants to kind of force us into a contract. Or else she'll wait for two weeks to get her, her payment down at one time. You know, because everybody else is more important. He's under a contract with, yeah.
I've, I've got that, and well, I'll jump down to, to queue ITV, just to also remote in with Bill, with Mr. Ici. I think we're still not able to remote in. Uh, we got the controller, March second, and it's just, uh, we need to be able to get this in there. Lab, software on laptops, I don't have the software I need. I can't zoom, I can't, we tried to talk to our trainer one day, it wouldn't work. Uh, we needed, there'll be a shared drive, so we can share information through databases. We needed Adobe, a shared drive, so we could share information through databases. So if that's something that the company can do or look at, maybe-
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Because again, we need to get function in there, because it's needed. F, Record Retention, Restart Inventory, that's what I was talking about there. What's your thoughts on temp hire to help Laura deal with that? Kind of get some things organized in the end. They're jumping, you guys dealt with temp hires before, I know, previously?
There hasn't been worked out too well, so.
Well, if we hire, I mean, we've hired girlfriends, and, you know, I think we need to hire people that'll do it. So do we want to look at hiring somebody to deal with that? Laura said that it'd be more efficient if she dealt with it, but I think she needs help with that. And tower through it, and then, I mean, it could be a temp agency, could be, but again, that's, I mean, do you want me to look at the temp agency?
There's other things coming up down here on those.
We don't have to do it, Mark. Maybe somebody else can do it, since you keep taking all this stuff.
Well, that's what I'm saying, do you want to find a temp for it?
Yeah, we could find somebody, I think. What would be the outcome, I mean, that's all that has to matter. Our-
That's what I'm saying, somebody's got to figure it out. Do you, you said we?
Yeah, I can do that, that's fine. It's not a problem. But if we vote to hire, don't we need to make that decision at the board? Do we want to buy, hire somebody? You just said you wanted to, but did the board decide to do it?
I make the motion to hire temporary help to assist with the records retention, restart inventory, classification, disposal, and provide any additional needed assistance to our secretary, including production of minutes, on a temporary basis until needed. Is there a second?
Where are you getting it from? Where's this temp hire coming from?
A temp agency?
Do you have a contract for that?
No, I mean, we would search, we would ask a temp agency, who do you have? What's the hourly rate? And you're proving that we're not hiring a consultant.
I mean, what's the difference? Why, I just, you know, a contract, and now you're saying, well, just hire somebody. Poof, you know, no contract or anything. What's the difference?
I think a temp agency is a little different than hiring a consultant or an administrator. That would be like saying, do we want to hire a plumber to fix that leak?
I'm just saying that that's a, that, I'm, you don't want to have a price, you don't want to have an hourly rate, you don't have an hour-
You have nothing.
You guys have nothing.
Because you go to the, because you go to the temp agency and you get-
You still have to have a-
When you authorize an electrician to repair your thing, are you getting a contract for it? No, you're paying for it and just, when that toilet backed up in there, did we do a contract? It's the same thing, it's just-
Well, you guys already had a contract in PlayStation for the contract.
Well, we just call and, yeah, say, "Been here for-"
Somebody you guys use on a record base, so you can call them, they will fix it and pay them, and they will come out the way.
It's not a contract.
No, it's just a, money came out and it's there.
I mean, if you don't want, I'm just trying to move stuff along, and Ms. McKee can research that and-
But my question is, let's even talk Laura about why we need this person. Okay? You're saying we need this person to, okay, I get that, Mark. But to give Laura some additional help. So she may concentrate on doing that, while maybe they're doing the phone or whatever else they can do, or vice versa. Is that correct? So, I mean, these are some things we have to discuss.
Laura said that she can't do the minutes and that.
Okay.
She doesn't have the time. That's something we'll have to discuss. She's on a four-day week. We need her five days, then what would zoning, Z8 want to do? But this is, again, temporary need, and that was one of the things I believe truly in the audit, was there was violation on the records. We're doing annual records destruction, retention. And that was another audit issue that we need to deal with. We can't just let that sit for another five years. And what image are we presenting to developers or anybody else when we go in there to talk to them? And we have boxes on tarps, we have, it shows that we don't have our stuff together. And again, it's been longer than five, I've been told five years, that-
So you just have to figure it out, which way we're going to move as far as getting a person to do Laura's job, where Laura does that, or, you know, we just got to figure that side of it out.
That's what we're trying to do right now, not want to make a decision now. Do you want to postpone it?
Well, I'm not saying to postpone it, I'm thinking, talking to Laura too, and see if what she needs.
Well, that would be postponing, you're going to talk to her.
Yeah, so we, well-
I've talked to her.
Okay, but I haven't.
Right, but I, I've talked to her, and she said, again, that's why the minutes are behind, because these are lengthy things. And she's dealing with that, dealing with all this other stuff. We don't have working files in there. You open those file cabinets, it's like from 2009, cell phone bills, and just find it. We don't have legal contracts, we don't have a thing, legal contracts, but-
And when's-
We need to get that in place, and if we can hire someone that can assist Laura, again, within agency, it'll be temporary. I've got a neighbor that offered, however, everybody, I don't want to be like, hey, hire her, because she knows me or she's my neighbor, so I'm not going to suggest her. But there's people that would do it too, but a temp agency will just come and do it, and you can probably find someone that deals with records. Or again, that administrator, Lynn Bruno, she deals with those records and stuff, she could help do that. And that's where I said, full-time, let her deal with it. I think we need to move forward with something, we're stagnant, we're three months-
We'll talk about it. And then, like you said, when we do these long agendas, this what's put Laura behind too, because she's making minutes off of all this conversation right now.
But these are things we need to-
But no, I'm not saying we don't need to address them. You don't have to stack them on one meeting. We get to do it on the 18th. I mean, some of this stuff, we have to see, what's important, what's going left. I'm just, Mark, I'm just saying, I'm just saying.
I pull stuff off. So we don't want to, I'll move to hire a temp for temp agency to help with to restart inventory, classification, and disposal of our records, and assist Laura until that is completed. Is there a second? Come on, David. All right, Morpsey Intern Program, Mr. McKee, you wanted that?
Okay. Morpsey is looking to bring a student to work with us from May to August. And the students are studying in economics of development, so they would, they'd be able to work in the township and get some experience. I, I at one time was an intern for, when I was a college student, and maybe some of you guys in the audience as well. But Morpsey's willing to do $1,500 for that person to come in one day a week. Also, if we want to do them two days a week, they said we could match it. So that's what I'm presenting today to the resident and to the board.
So my-
And I don't know them, they're just whoever they send over. I don't know them, I don't have any relationship with them at all.
So my question is, you want them to deal with economic development?
Well, they could do a lot of things. They could deal with maps, don't need, if they could sit and work with John, they could sit and work, excuse me, Laura. There's a vast of things that they could do. It's just a temporary position from May to August.
Well, my question is, we just put a new assistance zone inspector who's assisting them. As far as economic development, we're not even, we don't have the department, we don't have, I don't know what they're going to work on. I, the experience is a benefit for them as much as being in it. And what are we going to teach them in how we're in such disarray here, and not having that?
Were you ever a college student and worked as an intern for anybody?
I have, I have.
Oh, nice. So was that a great experience for you?
It was.
And you still think about, I'm sure you appreciate it.
It is.
This is what we're trying to give back to the community, that's all we're trying to do.
What are you going to be doing for $1,500?
There's things, I mean, it's not just that area, there's a lot, vast of things. They could help with some of that stuff in there. Get to read some of the documents, they could help with Laura, they could help with John, they could, there's other things that they could do. I mean, they could go out into the community.
As an intern, what I would say is, that I would be disappointed if I was brought in somewhere and I wasn't working, learning. The thing is to learn the area that you're focusing on, brought in. So you're going to have to do record retentions and stuff, I think that's a service to the student.
No, I'm not saying they could do record retention, I'm saying they could, it could be, it's not saying that you can't do it, it's not against it. I mean, it happens, it could happen. There's nothing wrong with that. You know? I'm just saying. I mean, this is the good news. Morpsey will pay for it. If we decide to take, we don't have to take it, it's not a force. They just asked me, as a board member, if we wanted to bring on a intern, like a student, to come in and sit and work with the township. That's it.
Mr. Singleton, would that be a benefit to you, to have an intern one day a week? My concern is you're training Steven right now. You're going to have to show the roads to a new person while we're trying to train Steven, who's doing a great job.
Well, I'm not sure exactly, I'm not sure exactly what it all entails, if they're going to watch, actually help, or whatever.
Either one, yeah.
Either one.
And it's not, we're not bound to it, just to let everybody know.
I mean, they're going to-
I was offered it.
To learn, not necessarily to-
Yeah, so how, yeah. I mean, we're not bound to it. If we decide to do it as a-
Tenth of July, or?
Uh, May, let's see. She's looking for me to give her an answer by April. Because if you don't take that person, they can go to another township. It's not as whether our back. They can go to another township or even a city. So.
How's our, how's our preparation of, of contracts and our things that are coming? Or is this what they're supposed to live up to? I'm sure there's a lot of clauses that these things are supposed to have certain people by certain dates, or things like that. Those reports comes out, that is produced.
That was what the TRC district-
Right, and I believe that's the problem, they didn't do that to the things.
Well, the TRC district, then also a job with the 629 grants, that deal with that. I don't think you're going to have an intern research that, or, I mean, those are reports that are provided by these companies to TRC, to the TIRC. I don't think they're, economic development, I think they're going to do planning with-
Maps, filing, there's a lot of things they can pick up. That's one.
I, as I said, I-
It's okay, Mark.
I think it's a two-way street. I just love giving people opportunities, but are they going to get the opportunity that they're, that they think they're going to get? That's all I'm saying.
That it's one day a week, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, one day a week, Morpsey will pay us $1,500, and it's probably like $15 an hour for them. That's it.
Well, here-
Or if we decide to match them, they will here, be here two days a week. That's our choice.
That was-
But if we do one day, and somebody else in another township offers them two days, I'm sure they want to go there.
Now, the information you provided, it just says, two days, approximately 16 hours a week.
Right, that would be, if they match, if they match it, if not, it'd just be one day. Because she approached me with the first one, it was just going to be one day. And I said, "Oh, that's, that's fine." And then she came back and said, "Well, we would prefer that, you know, you guys would do two days, that way they can, we would have to match it though, we would have to pay that additional day."
I mean, I'm being, being your-
Bye, have a good night.
Would this be beneficial, hindrance?
I mean, as far as learning opportunities for them, you know, we're doing judgment fishing, maybe it's an easy day, things like that. I'm sure they would learn, you know, or at least have a good experience with that.
Would it hamper us at all, and we're prepped right now with-
I don't think it would hamper us, but I mean, it would be more of a, basically showing them to learn.
Yeah, that's kind of like shadowing.
Shadow.
We're doing this conference late, late too. Wait, this, we're working on this, yeah, we could pick four comments up too. That would be a challenge.
Existing agreements, things like that, plans that we have. It's always something to think about.
I mean, if they decide to enter, if you want to do it, that'd be work.
You think you stick to two days, that you guys that way, or just one? Have it here two days?
Well, if that's appropriate, two days, I'd say two days. I don't want to, again, this opportunity is for them to learn, as much as it's to help us, and I don't think we should give them a half measure.
Okay.
I mean, I, I mean, is there a motion?
Motion to bring in the temp through Morpsey as a student for the summer program from May to August. Two days a week.
Discussion?
Second.
Thirty seconds. Johnson seconds discussion. I want to take, is, Mr. Singleton is supervisor or assistant zoning inspector, would he be the one supervising the student, and you all direct with the student?
Absolutely.
So you got one?
We don't know who they are.
Nope.
I have no idea.
Okay, any other discussions? Move on. Roll call, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
All right, legal firm transition update. As you know, we're transitioning to Brochus, Briggs, for all the Jeds and TIPS and all that. They're dealing with that right now. I put priority on the 629 grants, because those are coming due. I just got a call on the Phase 1 for Global Way, asking where the money is. So we've got to get that submitted, so we can get that grant money to pay them. Otherwise, we are liable for those funds. I think it's over $700,000. That one threw $1,000 on Phase 2 Global Way, and that Coles, I think, is $300,000. So we're working on that right now. And then, as far as the other issues, I said, they're dealing, Elbers with all the transition documents and updates of where we're at. And I'll discuss a little bit of the Scanel project later, that they'll be dealing with there. And then if we want to make any amendments to the Jed or Jed Z agreements, which Mr. Elbers and I discussed previously, they can do that, and I can update the board in a future executive session. Is there any questions on the transition at all?
So, I do have a question, Mark. So you had to meet with Elbers and Albert on the transition?
No, I just directed them that we have a new firm, they, the new firm reached out and requested all documents. Elbers had sent a peddler everything's app, and Peter Briggs prioritized that, and they're going to be working with Elbers and Albert in that capacity to be up to speed. And so it'll take a little bit, whatever, transition order. Then no longer getting conflict between him, like, us, and Jeds and Jeds and Alberts.
So that's, I'm glad you said the conflict, because when we got that email from Elbers and Albert, he was saying there's no conflict there. Did you read that?
Yeah, as a resident, he told me there was no conflict. And then, when we discussed, I don't know if it's appropriate, because it was an executive session, before we discussed an executive session, that we wanted to do, there was conflict, and he said, "I wouldn't be able to handle that for you, because I represent the Jeds." So there was clear conflict. Every other attorney I talked to said, "There's a conflict, you can't represent two entities." And also, he represents the Water District, who were in negotiations with renegotiated TIPS that were passed by the purchase board. So you've got a conflict there too, so.
So you didn't respond to his email then, obviously, because he sent us, board members, saying that there's no conflict of interest from him representing the township, representing the Jeds. He said there's nothing there. the Jed, he said there's nothing there, so I was trying to figure out, you know, you're saying that it is, but he's saying as a firm that it's not.
The person that has the conflict is saying they don't have a conflict.
Well, he's a law, a lawyer for the, I don't think he would say that.
Every other attorney I spoke into said, "Just, just how does that sense, we have two different entities and they both have the same attorney?" Who's he representing?
But that's two different things, Mark.
And when we had an issue, he represented the board, the Jed board, not us, he said, "I can't represent you on it," so that is the conflict.
It's a potential, and if he does, and that's whatever, there's nothing there, I mean, he said, he sent us an email, I think we should have responded to.
I, boy, I...
Right, because he's saying that there was no conflict.
I've spoken to him and there is a conflict and he, I even had the email, I consented to you, and you're discussing errors, turning my privilege, but we'll waive that.
No, 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 that's not, no, that email was not that.
No, I was gonna explain another email, where he said there was a conflict, and that I would have to go to the prosecutor for it, and the prosecutor doesn't deal with this, if he didn't have a conflict, he would have done it, he was the township's attorney before, he's the Jed board's attorney, he chose to represent the Jed board in that issue and say, "I can't represent the township in that issue," that's the conflict. If there was no conflict, he'd say, "Okay, we're gonna do this," and I don't understand why you're discussing that.
I'm just asking, because he sent an email to us saying that there was no conflict, that I would make sure that, so I, we can move on to this bridge.
Have we?
Yeah.
So you asked a question about that?
Yeah.
How much is this transfer?
That's what I was gonna ask next.
I think this one way is not gonna talk to you, it's free, so somebody's paying the bill, right?
Correct.
And it's us, and it's not...
And the Jed, the Jed boards.
The Jed boards are gonna pay us for that.
Aren't the Jeds materials reimbursed, the expense paid to do the Jeds is reimbursed to the Jeds, are they not?
It's always set to us, it's not.
Right, that's the one thing, okay.
But even if it's at our cost to transition it to get proper representation...
But how much?
And...
I'm looking at, did you guess that?
Whatever, whatever hours that are required. The new firm is much cheaper than the old firm.
Yeah, we're still, Albert, they're still targeting us to help the old firm, right?
This board voted to change.
I know, I'm aware of that.
So, why are we arguing, if you wanna know specifics, if you want, in our attorney doesn't know what he doesn't know about what's going on, I'm sure he's not gonna, I don't know, upon your question, I guess, it's gonna be what it is, I mean, you asked, what, Albert's billing monthly for us?
Kinda make the party, but then because they're already voting to switch, I was just curious if they gave you any kind of estimate on whether it costs to switch.
No, because he doesn't know, are you gonna, no?
I told him I asked him, no idea, just, yeah.
But just for the record, privileged and confidential attorney client was not on that email that I just talked about, just so you know, it was not, he was just responding there.
Any communication with the attorney?
No, it's not true, I talked to him, that's not true, I talked to him, so that's not true.
All right, removal and replacement of board appoint, replacement of appointed board members, alternate appointees, I wanted to bring up, I believe we need to make the switch of these appointees, the prior board allowed the chairman to appoint himself and the same individuals of every board possible to control, I spoke to several that they're just yes men on these boards, there's many, please, there's many people that are willing to serve and that could, now, the reason for removal, for Mr. Carlisle, CARES Act bribe, failed to submit the OPWC grant that the board approved, please let...
What happened to him with board yet?
All the boards.
All of them, like all of them.
All, please let, please, please let, every, every board. And we discussed some boards in executive session, which if you'd like me to break privilege, I can, but failed to submit the OPWC grant that the board approved once he lost the election, failed to help in transition anyway, failed to show up at the Jet Z board meeting stating none of the Edna appointees would show up, causing the board to cancel the meeting when the Jet Z board tried to reschedule, Carlisle called the Newark representative, representative got him to drop it, and I know he also called you, Mr. Johnson, he made an agreement with a developer who was a large contributor to his campaign to plow undedicated roads using township resources, had Edna hosted developer's firework display outside and approved approval of the board, used township resources, lacked any required controls regarding liability, putting the township at risk, violated the Jed contracts by improperly appointing C3 as Jed Seven Chairman, allowed Mr. Hagy to vote on matters that he wasn't even appointed to the board, regarding Mr. Rogers submitted false certificate of transition which you attested to receiving, failed his duties as fiscal officer, IRS fines, missing reports, filings of improper accounting of CARES Act funds and other, of the financial books, accepted improper Jet Three seat appointment in violation of the Jed contract. Mr. Hagy, I was told he was involved in that racist note that was left by his realtor at the quality meeting, that was on video, and amazingly, that video password, just nobody had, we still have that, can recover that, the other individuals will provide an affidavit, I don't think he should be serving as any representative of our township, and Mr. Hagy improperly voted as part of Jed Seven when he was not a member, causing to have another meeting and redo everything there. Now, for those and many other reasons, I believe those individuals should be removed from all boards possible, and where there are possibilities for alternates, we should appoint different alternates, last time I proposed, and there was no even discussion on it, of removing, and then I even proposed just putting alternates on there, Ms. McKee, during the election, you said what, that CARES Act was a bribe as far as you knew and should be investigated.
And it was investigated.
No, it was not.
Well, I'm looking at what, how much management I have.
No, and these are the people that by not entertaining that motion, you wanna keep on the boards representing Edna, there's a thousand reasons to remove them, and many other, other people that can serve in those, in those roles, especially like I said, the OPWC grant, on election night, that was approved to send, it was in the system, and it was, he's, Mr. Carlisle's not working for the benefit of the township, and neither was Mr. Rogers who violated ORC and was deficient in his duties, so again, I wanna ask this board, are we gonna just accept that behavior as our representatives? Are we not gonna try to replace them with competent people with integrity? And it doesn't have to be who I suggest, I suggest people, because nobody else is suggesting anything, you two could also suggest that.
Well, you suggested it on the night up when we went into executive, you did, you did, but we didn't.
I sent you an email prior to...
Right, you did, but we couldn't, I couldn't, I couldn't get a person within a day to be at the meeting the next day.
Right, and I said, "We can change that," it was immediate, at that moment, we could change them, and you didn't even wanna do alternates, and like I said, Mr. Carlisle said, "None of the Edna trustees are showing up," the only way that was happening is that he told them, "You're not showing up with me." What, we don't want someone to do that, Ransford had to send him certified mail saying, "You better show up to the Jeds board, otherwise you're gonna be removed, we're gonna remove you." Lincoln County...
When was this part?
At the last Jed One and Two meeting, I talked to Lori at Ransford, the tax administrator, I had to send him a certified letter, Pro Lincoln County removed him from the board because he failed to show up the last three times and didn't even respond to the certified mail they sent him, so they removed him. Do we want this type of person serving this township? I understand your side of it, I totally understand.
That's fine, you don't have to.
So you're willing to keep Carlisle on all these boards?
I didn't, I didn't say all the boards, that's not, we were talking one particular board, that's it.
Which one would you wanna remove?
Mark, listen, that's what you're in on, you wanna be moving from all the boards, okay? I'm not, I'm not, I'm gonna present as they come, I'm not going to sit there and just go, we're on brush, we're gonna move him all, off every board, that's what you want, you get upset because I don't agree, and you go out there on social media and you badmouth me, for me not agreeing, I don't, I'm not gonna do that, so we need to talk about each board individually.
I make a motion to remove John Carlisle from the TIRC boards for Lincoln County and Ransford, is there a second? It's not that board, I make a motion to remove John Carlisle from the Jed One, Two, Three, Four, and Seven. Is there a second? No, I'm done. Running out of boards here, would it be easier if you just tell me what board you would consider?
You know what, that's the kind of constant, you know, no, you can even see in stuff like this out there, so no, that's, that's...
So you're not willing to entertain removing him from any board?
That's really bad, how you talk to me, Mark, it's really bad, it's really bad, you want...
Are you willing to remove him from any board? That's the question.
Keep moving, keep moving, keep going.
As you don't, don't wanna remove him from any board, well, we'll stop, we need to go home sometime. Development update, 6.9 grants, new proposed development, I've been working with various individuals with the 6.9 grants to get those completed, so we get the funding, so we pay back our loans to the developers, again, it's a little over a million dollars in total, I think 1.3 million, I filed the annual reports previously on that, I had given you two the information on that development on the east side in Kirkersville, where it's already Zone M1, and just wanna get your ideas of what you're thinking about that. Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Any thoughts on that development?
Um, not if it's not, no.
Mr. Johnson? I mean, is the board willing to support that development, the developers come to the township?
I haven't heard from them, by the way, I know you mentioned they would be contacted, I haven't heard.
Okay, well, then they will, but I've given you the information...
Yep, you did, but I would like to have a conversation.
So you're willing to entertain...
I would like to have a conversation with them, yes, I like information.
You're talking about the M1, that place over there, right?
Yep, those previously, Zone M1 in 2009, they were looking for economic incentives on that land, I don't think they move forward if you don't, so if we wanna stop that, we could just probably not give any economic incentives, now the counties could go around us and do a 50% CRA with Tiff, that's one thing that was kinda discussed about the second building of Scannell, which I'll get to, so the county does have some, some options there, if we don't, but I just thought it'd be good for the board to discuss, but I guess we'll wait for you guys to speak with the developer.
That would be appropriate.
And, well, are you open to any economic development for developers, any abatements, any Jeds, CRAs, DCAs?
Yeah, I answered that, Mark. Yeah, I answered that.
The second?
Yeah, I answered that.
All right, and then, I think I mentioned last time, the Royals property was sold to the Americans Home for Rent, so they'll be building there, and the, in the northeast corner of our corporate park, TPA with that property there, it's in Jed Two, they're moving forward with a request for a CRA abatement, so this would go to my previous question, McKee, Jeff Reese said he was gonna be, you had talked to him before, so if he hasn't reached out to you yet, he probably should, so depending on the board's pleasure with that, you know, we'll move forward or not. All right, PRCD zoning modification, K, including minimum percentage of single family units, just because of the time it's gonna take for us to get through the comprehensive plan and all the pressure on us at development, a large part of our township is PRCD plan, residential conservation district, we can initiate a change that, if we do approve this, it would go to the Lincoln County Planning Commission, then to the zoning commission for their non-voting recommendations, and then to us for final approval or changes, what I, and I said this to you guys before, what I'm proposing is, right now, in that section they allow for various uses, which include single family, one to three units, double family, and then multifamily, but multifamily is capped at 25% of total allowed density, I would propose that we include, single families attached residence, dwelling units permitted uses, a requirement to include a minimum of 25% of single family homes in any PRCD development, this would be to ensure that it's a good development with a variety of options, I think that's one of the good things about PRCD, you could have some apartments, you could have some single family, it's basically what the Settino development is behind Speedway, High Point, apartments, ranges, single family homes, you could spend your whole life cycle. Right now, the way it is, is they can do 25% apartments, and then all three unit buildings just shoved in, that was the Hagy threat, that was supposed to be shovel ready the day after election. I think this would be a good move, Mr. Singleton, I must be agree with you, you'd said, do you agree with that?
I, yeah, I don't disagree with a minimum of 25%.
So, you're saying you know that 25% of all the buildings are all the units there, is that what you're saying?
If they're allowed 200 units, 25% or 50 would have to be single family homes, and a max you could have apartments, a multi-unit buildings would be 50.
So how would that affect that amount of space that you use, because the conservation district is designed to leave a lot of open space.
It's, it's the same 50% requirement, it's 50% regardless of what's in there.
Because single family homes take a lot more space than apartments would.
Right, well, you still need 50%, and they can use that for something else, and in here, which is part of, I think, the good design of it, is 30% of, single family lots have to have an 80-foot lot width, 30%, 90, and 40% have to have 100 or wider, so you have a variety of lots, a variety, so it's giving people different alternative, if you want a small lot, if you want a big lot, if you want, again, I think it's needed to ensure that there's some mix in there that can serve a bunch of people, especially with Intel, I think we're gonna have a push for a lot more single family, but developers wanna put as little as they can, close together, shared walls, so this way, you'd have 25% single family, maybe 25% apartment buildings, a couple buildings here or there, and then maybe some of the one to three, you know, two, three units attached, like the red one here. Opposed to just apartments and the two to three units connected.
So we limit it up, and limits to get 100, a lot, they would limit them out, we should go with those 50 acres, right?
50% has to be open space, but that's the calculations, but...
So it's all that space, basically by putting requirement of more housing on there and bigger lot, that's less apartments that you build around there too, is that correct?
No, apartments are very tiny space, they're just in one little section, and you could put 50 apartments in just a couple buildings, and that would take up a few houses.
Right, that's my point, it kind of limits the amount of apartments you can put in there, correct?
This limits on the, you can only do 25%.
Right, that's what I'm saying, so it kinda cuts it down because houses take a lot more space than apartments do.
They won't cut down the apartments at all.
I don't understand. You've got...
If you use... These lots aren't that big, the lots are only just under 30 acres, the largest,
In, under the permit uses, you can use single family dwellings, two family attached, three family attached, or multifamily, multifamily is a maximum, you have a total number of dwelling units based on the calculations of the acreage minus 50%. So, you can do a max, say it's 100 apartment, 100 dwelling units on this parcel.
Okay.
You can, the max of those of 25 would be your multifamily dwellings, if you did a single family, minimum of 25, at least 25 of those would have to be single family dwellings, the rest could be single family dwellings, two family dwellings, or three family dwellings. The only PRCD we have right now is farms, and they're all single family dwellings, they don't have any of the other.
But it wouldn't constrain them in what they're doing, but I said, even the pain that proposed, I think that's, the whole bit space was like 78% or something, that they were doing two, three units, and then just the...
That was the idea, is to maximize the open space, was a reason for that overlay to start way back when, because we're trying, you find a way that we can still have housing, but keep open, a big open space, the rural atmosphere.
But I think single family is more rural than two to three units, so requiring a minimum of 25%, and I think it ensures a mix, which I think the community needs, and otherwise, we're just gonna get three unit buildings with apartments. You don't think we should try to ensure that we make some single family units to, for just the diversity of the development?
Well, I still think we can single-family, I'm just saying that, I guess I'm trying to best use the land without spreading houses all over the country.
Well, most is maximum, 50% will not have houses. And if they want the bonus, then they're gonna have to have trails, or they're gonna have to, all that stuff. So as I said before, that the previously threatened community referendum was successful, didn't beat the PRCD, there was a lot of things wrong with it, but I think it's a good, good text, and majority of that is under this. So I, and this doesn't mean we're instituting it, this is saying, if we propose it, that Lincoln County will give their opinion, zoning their own. So I think at least let's get their opinion, and we can go from there. But we need to do something. And the other thing in here was the proposal, because in the text, it states that any stub roads, neighboring stub roads must be connected. Now, there was the issue with disparate communities where one community doesn't have sidewalks, and you're building new development, shoving all the traffic through, and in that last PMUD, it was emergency access only. So I was proposing language that if it's connecting to a neighboring development without sidewalks, that would be emergency access only.
Like in your community?
My, my, I don't know.
You don't have hot sidewalks, you know?
You did it on the PMUD?
I did it on the county.
Right.
And you got a list on that.
Well, right, so they did it on that, so they can do it on this.
That's such a thing, yeah.
Well, either it's allowed or it's not. And again, they can, they could say, no, it's not a good idea. That's, that's why I'm proposing, so I move to approve Resolution 22040501, Resolution of Enzoning, Section 10, Planed Residential Conservation District, PRCD is their second.
How second?
Ms. McKee seconds, is there a discussion?
Send this up to the zoning commission then?
No, nope, the process is if we pass the resolution, this is according to Section 602 of our zoning code, that if we pass a resolution, it goes to the Lincoln County Planning Commission within five days. And they have, they have a meeting coming up, I think on 16th, so we'll be able to catch that meeting. Then it goes to the zoning commission?
It goes to the zoning commission, the zoning commission submits it to the county planning commission.
In, in the 602, it says directly to the Lincoln County Plan, no?
It goes to the zoning commission first. The zoning, they don't act on it, they just have to sign off on it and be the submitting party to the county.
You go check that 602? Just while we're doing, I mean, that doesn't matter, whoever goes to, it goes to.
I think our zoning commission, zoning commission has to initiate.
No, there's, there's different ways to initiate, we can initiate it, zoning commission can. And the proper way is through resolution.
Section 604, transmitted to zoning commission. Immediately after adoption of Resolution Order Trustees filing an application by the Internet, unless any property resolution, application shall be transmitted to the commission, the zoning commission.
602.
602 is, this is just how to initiate it.
Right, and what's it say? I believe an initiation is, well, we have five days to submit it to Lincoln County Planning Commission.
No, it's, there's no, there's no days on it. But it, it has to be, there's timelines that have to be...
Well, whoever this goes to, it'll go to.
It'll go to the zoning commission, zoning commission submits it there, they get mom bonding, they send it back to the zoning commission here.
The four parts are initiating, so wherever it goes.
So, so we're moving, we'll just click on that for what reason?
To get it going, because why delay, for real delay? Because it's gonna take the Lincoln County Planning to review it, zoning to review it, whatever order, and then us. We've got all this pressure from Intel, from just everything going on, that we need to start working on stuff. And until we have that overall review, we need, I think, need to address some of these things, because again, everything south of 70 and everything east of 310 has the PRCD over. So that can be developed, that way, I'm saying, we should address this, ensure some mix of development in there in this back of the township. So is there any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Maintenance, buildings, property, I know you're in charge of that, Mr. Johnson. I think we need to kind of address some of the items, like the rusting doors, the cupola isn't protected, the wood staining, I think that's gonna kind of deteriorate. I'm a big believer in preventive maintenance, because it'll last longer. I mean, some of those posts are rusting out, if we can address that. Well, that rattling, at the base of the factory, it's all rusting, eventually that's gonna rust out.
Right, the ones, okay.
The one out there, but even those doors are rusting out, it's easier to repair than replace.
Yeah.
And then just a couple other things, I forgot, sort of, the light in the park nearest the gazebo is out, the streetlight one there, and then shingles are coming off that gazebo. So I said I'm blocking, and I don't know if Ms. McKee can block the park or...
I'm blocking this week, no?
But, so there's, I think we need to keep up on maintenance. Road crew does great with the maintenance of their buildings and that, I just think we gotta factor in, to help the park a little bit better. And then as far as the park, is there any plan, Ms. McKee, about beautification, mulch, planting?
Jeff, that's a good question, how did you guys handle it last year? How was that handled? Because I know there's some people, at one time, I heard wanting to donate flowers.
Well, we used to have, we used to have a lot of people that came and planted flowers for us, right?
Yeah, that's true, a lot of the churches.
Yeah, churches come to us.
I know, and the bubble put in mulch, and you guys put mulch stuff, but I just was wondering, are you looking at getting that done? As the slaughter breaks?
My first time, sorry, you guys, I went up on that park thing as far as getting the mulch done. I will revisit what you guys did last year, but what did you guys do last year? You do, is it already, how do you guys, is it kind of a purchase order that you guys do every year for the same amount?
That would, we've got mulch, trees, and shit over there.
Oh, you just use what you already have in the garage over there. But what about the flowers?
Well, most of the, the church groups, I mean, most of them, they just donate their garden.
Do they, do they contact us just to let us know that?
They need to ask us, well, obviously, they need to ask us on what you're selling, yes.
They just call into the office and, yeah?
Yeah.
Laura, okay.
But just social media page would be great to get out to the community to ask for help. All right, there's nothing else on maintenance. Proposed purchases from the BIA, which is Builders Improvement Account. Those are accounts typically from 10% to 30% that jet money is placed into for reimbursement to the builders, but also those amounts built up where it can be used for the improvement of the area. Our road crew trucks have been purchased through that and other, other things. So I wanted to get the board's approval, I've got some estimates, but I just wanted to see if you're even for this, submitting this. And again, this kind of depends on who's on that board, whether they're not gonna cooperate just for the sake of it. But hot water, hot water pressure washer for the garage right now, there isn't a residential one. It's very hard to get, it tries cleaning, especially the salt radios, I think that's a safety issue. Plowing, we had to pull over, text or call, radios are just so much safer, easier. I would be looking at radios installed in the trucks, and then also portable ones. Commercial wet dryback for cleaning out the trucks. Again, these are trucks purchased through the BIA, so, and I went, got the opinion of Albers an hour before, saying that these would be purchases because they are servicing roads from which these developments are in. Also, a mower, mower max soft attachment for our newer mower max to allow us to trim back trees. We've lost how many mirrors? Just lost a few?
Two or three, yeah.
About 600 bucks each, or?
About, close to a thousand.
About a thousand each, so these trees need to be trimmed back, and with these attachments, they can just put it on and go through. There's various ones, I talked to the salesman, Patrick, and he kind of went over it, it could be one large one, three or four smaller ones, and then a gator, a UTV, basically to allow the crew for their mowing and maintenance of the parks and that. So you want to take a pick-up truck, you can get back there.
We'll build trees in this, that are up now, walk by, we'll get the, we'll get the trash, you know, my, my...
So that, and then a street rack sign right now, all the street signs are just kind of undergrounding that. They were previously gonna try to like build something, weld something, there's systems already out there that I think we could do. I'm gonna look at putting all that together and submit it to the BIA for their approval for purchase. We'd have to wait for their approval, then we can purchase it and then pay for it. So, are you guys for that? Because I'm trying to support them in their job, what they're doing.
Well, that's nice that you're doing that.
That's what I've been doing.
Yeah, yeah, we should support our guys and house out there, always take care of it.
And just that, I think this is important, baby. It's, Bubba's very hesitant to ask for things, he got direct, you know, just, but I think with this, it could be more efficient. And I'll put together the official list, I've got bids on most of it. I'll put those all together, share with the board before we officially submit it to the BIA. But again, with the pointies there, I don't know if they're even gonna consider it, but we'll see. So if there's nothing else on that, the risk assessment, I did hear back from the risk assessment. We've got 60 days to implement various things from, for our insurer to reduce liabilities. Bubba, within, I think, a day or two, handled all his garage and stuff, with signage moving, fire extinguishers out, and so those are done. We, they need us to do an annual sexual harassment training class video as part of that. And then they did indicate that one of their main concerns was the fireworks display that we posted, I don't know what, our name was attached to, saying that if anything like that happens again, we have to have proper additional insurer, we have to get certificates from the department. It's gotta be properly done, because they saw so much liability. They said if something happened there, the township would have been sued, and we wanted that insurance coverage.
But what was weird is they mentioned July 4th, did I see that?
They called it July fireworks, because I think it was, no, it was late. The original fireworks two years ago were supposed to be July 4th, and they were postponed, but those are developer fireworks, that it was not aborted, the board did not vote on sanction anything. But again, that's supposed to be investigated, the township resources can support that. So moving forward, we'll have to do that. But as far as the sexual harassment stuff, Ms. McKee, you're working with Ben Albrecht regarding employee manuals, so it might have to have something in there about sexual harassment.
Yeah.
So that's it. Food truck at the park and other community events, I had an individual that actually lives down the street, this barbecue truck was looking for a place to have a drink over Friday, asked about the park, spoke with Mr. Singleton a lot about it, and he said, right now, it's not allowed during the pandemic. We're allowed to have it in residential areas, but this is actually residential. I think that we need to do more community events, and that would be a great way if we had a food truck Friday, where during lunch and dinner, we allow like two trucks, and we have to come up with a policy of how, how we select them to make it fair there to serve residents, they would see the park, maybe they would know about the park, they could eat in the park, it supports local businesses. Also, we could talk to a few of the township staff at lunch, walk over there. But I, I think we should do something to allow the food truck there. And I sent you guys an email about the, we could make a, an addition, I think it was 1029, you said?
Yeah, my, yeah, my suggestion was to create a section 1029 to specifically be a food truck.
And then we could, at our discretion, allow it in some areas, and that, I, I think government should not just like restrict everything, it should benefit the community, and as long as it's done in a good way, I think we should be a little bit more open to it, because food, drink, trucks are just reality. And to bring, to have it out here, you catch a lot of people, and then serve the community, take the joy of the park.
While they're qualified, move a little food truck.
What we had, we had issues with food trucks around here, and all three of those before, so. But I still want to get back into that same thing.
Right, and, and that would, we would have to go through that. And what did you say, if we wanted to do a food truck Friday, could we just do it by word motion?
If you wanted to do a food truck Friday, if it's sponsored by the township, after my discussion with prosecutor's office, you can do that. Outside of that, you know, they're good with allowing nonprofit organizations, churches, schools, that if the policy is placed, well, you just want to do it apart. As far as, at the schools or churches, it's just viewed more, it's no different than any other fundraiser, they would be pulling it there.
But if we changed the zoning, because right now, if a parent wants a food truck for their kid's birthday to park out from, they're not allowed.
Well, if they're, if they're using it at their own residence for...
On the street.
Their specific thing, yeah, that would be something that they could, could do. This would, we can include that into...
Is it allowed now? It is allowed now?
Yeah, because it's not set up for commercial use for, for their, whatever. One day event, I mean.
Well, I would like to see...
Well, I'm trusting one day event.
But I'm saying it's hard to enforce it too, because, I mean...
Well, first, I would like to see like food truck variety, or try to get, if you can go to a restaurant, you're going to Tascala, you're going to Pickertick, nobody's coming here. Like, this is a way to get all this other stuff built up, to get some energy going, get some community going. Are you guys for like a food truck Friday, looking into it?
I don't think it's a problem, I, hopefully they'll like it.
Snitz was just at Victory Baptist last night.
Yeah, across the road, they, they come every year, twice a year or something, don't they?
They do that as, as part of the fundraiser for the church.
Yeah, yeah, she is different, right.
The proceeds are, of course, not as great.
We could talk about more, so, but you guys are kind of on board with like a proposal, I see.
And then it'd be parked out by this park, right, you're right?
Yep.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
That's what we're pulling right up to.
Figure that out. Township land, the 4.1, or 4.41 acres on Laurel Drive, that was previously discussed on the board, I was contacted by one of those individuals there. That said, Mr. Carter allowed would sell them the land for like $1,000 an acre. I guess it was previously a park, there were some deed rescissions that they had to get, like have the residents assigned to be able to transfer that. What do we want to do with the park, or what do we want to do with this land? You've been involved with the board.
Where is this actual, I mean, where is the sewer plant was?
It's across from the old resident.
Okay.
It's an old sewer...
Plant was down there, now it's got a lot of, it's rough mowing in it.
Does that do it?
Yeah, it's rough mowing, that's a problem, it's such a rough thing to mow, and it's got to fill in and everything else, and it's...
We mow it.
Twice a year.
But that was the idea, was to get out, but, yeah.
Well, the residents are mowing it more often, because they want the nice lawn.
Well, that's kind of what we ended up doing, is we talked about what they want to take care of, that's fine, but we're, we're still mowing, all right?
Yep.
But they were supposed to mow it, I think that kind of fell off.
My issue is, we're letting them mow it, and they're setting up trampolines, they're setting up that we're exposing ourselves to liability, knowing they're using that.
We, we tried to discuss selling that land to them back there, because they couldn't help figure out what they wanted to do, and to have a green old lane or adjacent to it, and they couldn't all come together, so.
Because it seemed it fell through. What I was told, the ones, the five to the east were wanting to buy it, two of those have changed now. What I would propose, if there's nobody, we could either put it up for auction, make, I don't know, can anybody build on that, with that front end there? And I don't know, if I would want somebody building behind them, you're losing...
I guess, not with the flood.
Yeah, I, I got with the map, but it might be floodfront, so.
My, my thought is, we should dispose of it, either offer the residents there, there's, once you create their opportunity to purchase whatever, 50-foot back, 60-foot back, or you can go all the way back. Or if we want to promote some natural habitat, allow them a little bit, give them a little bit of backyard, but let it just grow wild, let it be wild, I think there's a stream, there's, we don't have to build everything on it, everything. We don't have to have a park on everything, like, it's wetlands, let it be wetlands. So we want to kind of propose that, and see who wants to, is interested in a whole land behind them, and do that. I mean, there's other property owners, but then you have access to, there's a creek there, I don't know if they would. And again, I think promoting just wild growth in some spaces is nice. And again, I think promoting just wild growth in some spaces is nice. And then the access point, you get, sell it to each person on the side or whatever. They have wider side or.
I thought a long time ago when I was looking at this, I was like, does that the access, you possibly get through the back here?
Well, that's a creek.
That's part of the bike trail.
Well, that's a creek.
I know, but then you could come into here and come here and access to the road that would take you over and then cross the bridge.
You're saying go like a bridge over there or something?
You'd have to have some kind of bridge, there's a bike trail bridge, it's not a, you know, it's a metro. No, I said if you build a bike trail and you went all the way over to.
Zone acres area.
You would come down, the way I looked at it, you could come back through here where this.
Little angle back here.
They were talking about building a road back here.
John, is that right?
They still, that guy's still talking about building that road back there or that drive or whatever? He's going to put lots off for his family.
Oh, on the personal, on the personal next still on?
I mean, the only way they could do that would, they almost have to do a minor subdivision because we need so much dirt turned on of the park.
Right, right. And then they looked at.
And if they end up front, this is probably, probably not like open part of land or. I mean, if this was next to our park, I would say, yeah.
Well, what I'm saying is you could get all the way over from there and all the way. If you came back through there, you could get through here and possibly get a bike trail on the backside here and into this. Would have put you to here, then you could go around here, go through the school.
To, to over all that part. Do we each want to come up with our ideas on this? I think again, instead of just a lane, let's go ahead and let's deal with it for the property owners, for us, for. Again, I think we have liability that we're letting them use trampolines and everything else there riding horses. So we should do something or just table it and we're, I guess not table.
I don't know, I have enough information, so I don't want to make a decision.
Well, that's what I'm saying, all three of us will figure out what we think we should do.
Yeah.
So that's it. Township land, projector screen or monitor hall conference room. I really think, again, trying to show you maps if people are here, they can't see. I think we should do, maybe look at projector screen, Lake County Plan Commission, it's a huge monitor. I think that's a huge expense. You can hang it from the ceiling, point over there. Definitely, we need one in the conference room, I've met with developers and other people. You can't even pull the maps, you can't even, I mean, you can do it through a Bluetooth connection with your laptop. So I'd like to look into, I could get pricing on a system there. So it'd be projected for like here and not have on there.
We have, we have the one projector that sits on the table that pulls out.
You sit there, but then you're going to be shining on him and you're, I mean, there's just, have you been to the school board meetings? South of Sibley School Board meetings, they've got like three screens monitored, just projected. And you also need, good projector, projectors meant for high end light, so it can, so people can see there. I mean, again, I don't want to waste my time if the board's just like, no. But I'm willing to get estimates for something in there or something here if you're even open to.
Do you guys have a big key to open it for?
I usually need the developers out here if you want to leave there.
Yeah, but the conference room, there's nowhere to, the conference room, if we're going to use the conference room, we should use the conference room. And again, we don't even have a map, a map with that now or with that development top of Kirkersville. Most places, you can just bring it up on your laptop and throw it out there of what you're talking. Or you had to go try to print a couple of maps, did you need this one, did you need that one?
We still have this tape there a little standard, but he says he wouldn't know if he was, it was too close there.
So you, you want me to set up the projector here to have the meeting with the developers to? Are we not going to do the conference room?
No, I'm asking.
To, to say. I'm saying a TV monitor or something like, like what these guys, it's a small conference.
Oh, you want a TV monitor, okay.
Yeah, not a projector. A projector, that's just to put a projector here.
The one in there and projector in this area or another?
Yeah, to, to point, that's the only logical wall to place it where they can see it and we can see. I mean, are you, again, if you guys are saying no, I'm not going to waste my time, but I think it's something the township needs to be transparent. Because there's a lot, I think, that the residents could have benefited life of seeing this or even with zoning though. If you go to a Lake County Plan Commission, they have a huge monitor and everybody could, residents are coming up pointing. Is it something you would consider? And I'm saying both that you're certain to rely on, but is it something you can consider?
We do need the, yeah, the screen like you have, because when I come in your office and talk to you, you bring it up, it's well needed. So if we put one in that room, for sure, because I had a meeting in there yesterday.
You're saying well, yes.
Yesterday I needed, so.
You've got one, you've got a place on the table and you're going to be shining through it. Can you just hang it from the ceiling and it goes?
And the last that was talked about, or Randy was talking about, coming up with something that.
Yeah, to hang.
Yes.
It would probably monitor right there and shoot to that wall.
Yeah, oh, yeah, those are.
Trying to figure out how to do the wifi though.
Instead of having cables hanging over there.
Well, if you're powering to that, you've got that above there. But typically, those systems can run off Bluetooth. So if you had your laptop, you could say, boom, put it on there in there.
Yeah, project is called project.
It's just Bluetooth.
Well, we were kind of, because we thought we might do that, but it wasn't quite there yet.
Yeah, now it's there, yeah.
Now, that's what I'm saying, we were not choosing that, because we're waiting for a way to project.
So you just need to purchase a screen comes down, is that what you're saying now for out here?
It would probably mount it more. So I can look at any, all I want to know, are you guys for even considering it? And I'll pull a proposal together for the board to consider.
Yeah, that would be great to have.
All I need to know is. All right, Skanel, Jet Seven Amendment update. Right now, the prior board approved two buildings there. They only built the one with the 50% tax abatement and they're looking for 100% on the second one. I told them I wouldn't even consider it unless they dealt with the neighbors' issues. I've spoken to the neighbors and I know, I've spoken to some, they said you were on board too. Are you, well, no, listen, because Judy's here and she's been very involved in this. I've been looking at concessions, a whole line of trees, the green over by the, they're all 30 foot, just whatever they can do.
There's a 30 foot of a 10 foot wall.
Right.
Well, no, it's 30, it would grow 30 foot on the other side and it would do. I'm trying to see what they can do, but what I'm saying is if we can get concessions. Vicki Hensel spoke to Vanny and she says she spoke to you and with you here, I can ask you directly. Then if we can get those concessions, are you okay with that second building? Because the only, the only way we're going to get concessions is them needing that CRA there. So if we say no, they're not going to do anything. So what I'm trying to do is force them to do something, but then you're going to have a second building. Did Vicki talk to you about that before or no?
Kind of.
Okay.
My thoughts are, they stood in here.
Oh, I know what.
They gave us a dozen promises.
Right.
A dozen promises. We will not know they're back there. You know, we're going to have mounded dirt, 20 foot wall.
Oh, I.
We have nothing.
I understand.
They have done nothing but destroy our livelihoods, our peace and quiet.
No, I understand, I understand, that's why I'm fighting for, we can.
I think the tree, it's going to be the remedy. The tree, if I compare, they are 30 foot trees, it's not going to remedy the problem that we have. It's not going to bring down the sound, it's not going to keep our ground from vibrating when they drop those trucks back there.
Well, I'll talk to you more after this than in depth, this is more update. But like I said, I talked to Vicki and she said she talked to you and I'll talk to you directly with this. But I'm fighting to, I'm not going to support a second building.
I think they should move that personally. I don't think they should even need that out there.
I don't think they should have built there.
They shouldn't.
But it was, it was approved, so I'm trying to, like I said, use that leverage. But again, even that, I've heard that almost like the threat of they could go to the county and get 50% of the tax payment and a tip from the county if we don't approve of that, which personally, I would never want to see another zoning of anything they could do that against. So I'm trying to fight for the residents there with their quality of life. But right now, Rumsburg had a public hearing on the Jet Seven Amendment. There, they tabled it, they're waiting for us, the school district already approved it. So it's basically up to us. And I'm not sure what you two feel on this. As I said, I'm not going to support anything unless they deal with the issues of the neighbors.
Yeah.
So and last I talked to Dan Carrington of Skanel. He said they have two options, he didn't tell me what those were yet. I don't know what his options are. So I'm waiting to hear from that, so we'll move forward. But I know they're pushing it, but since I took office and even before I took office, I've been working on this and it's just been tax liberal.
The second building, FedEx would be a totally different company.
Well, it's a totally different company, it's a spec building, but it was approved by the prior board. So they just excluded it from that original jet, but they want that at 100% tax payment.
Because I know with FedEx, part of the deal was that we were having all kinds of problems and noise back while we made life. And they said, well, FedEx, some of these trucks between that and the warehouse that they're building there. Amazon was that, if it take away that truck, it did, it sold a lot, it probably ended on the wall there. So Amazon was good to work with that in that way, makes FedEx feel the same way.
Well, luckily, Amazon built that wall at their own board.
Right.
I think the prior board should have required that. However, sound walls aren't an N L B O because it only affects a little bit, it can amplify a little bit past it. Their sound walls, I got a call from Vicki and said, I can see the trucks over the wall.
Oh, I can see their own ones.
Yeah.
And I thought, well, you want to root for her and say.
Wow, she was on the main level.
Because that wall was in.
But I said, you will not see the trucks.
Yep.
You see, plain to say.
The whole, it's like, we know always like you said, it wouldn't be going.
I was.
So that's what they said and that maybe we have some recourse or, I think that wall, that wall should have been 20 foot. It should have been built, but it was approved, that wall should have been 20 foot all the way through. At minimum.
Exactly. I mean, it looks like an eyesore because it's higher than the gin and where our yard grows, but it's 10 feet.
Yeah.
They look, they drop it. To me, that's a slap in the face.
So I'll, once I hear back from Dan Harrington, I'll let everyone know, I'll let you know, I'll talk to you more about it. But I'm trying to, like I said, use that leverage to get that, because otherwise, they don't have to do anything. So.
They're going to clean up my backyard, I guarantee that.
Well, we still have work to do back there, they've got trees to plant back there, they've got, they still have a lot of stuff to do, but it's been wet, so we'll deal with it, I'm fighting for you and no other reason, so I'll make sure. So that's that Pike Street. I know back in February, I got a call from Bill Lozier, said you had a meeting with him, that you wanted to be, you wanted him to share with me the plans.
Yeah, several months ago.
Where's that at?
Oh, well, we've had several meetings since then, just so you know. And right now, the district on Wednesday, looks like either the 18th or the 25th, looks like they're going to be able to submit, submit stage two. They're skipping to stage two on that where they didn't go through stage one. There's a problem with the, as far as he was saying, there was a problem with where the sewage line would be.
They did a water.
Yeah, water line, water line, so that's the problem right now. So we'll.
What about funding on that? Again, to, I know it's hard, I had trustee duties. Originally you wanted me to do development, I was surprised you took Pike Street. And are you considering funding because Bill Lozier said they don't know where that money is coming?
Okay, Bill Lozier, the reason I took Pike Street, since you keep bringing it up, this is not the first time you've done it, credit up. I was given Pike Street because of the beautification. They thought I would be the person, the guy who voted, that helped out where Carlisle and the board had stopped before. So I was asked to take over the project. I didn't care about taking it over, it's not a problem. I want to be proactive and help. So Bill Lozier and I have met on it a few times. So we're waiting now to see what the next step is with that. Because it was already, it was already going before I even got on the board, so.
It wasn't discussed on the board, and I'm glad you're taking it on, but the way you said, you were given.
Well, yeah, that's how I ended up with, with the Pike Street, yeah.
By the board.
Well, we all discussed it. We did discuss it, yes we did.
I just want to make sure.
Yes, we did. I just didn't just all of a sudden take Pike Street, it was fun to me.
Funding's a big issue, so we're going to.
Yeah, it is, it's a big deal.
Do you know what the cost of it?
Not, no, but I go back and that's one of the things that we've been discussing.
Because that's one thing I'm dealing with, all the entities with the tip, we're negotiating with tips of that. We need to figure out where our money's coming from or it's going, so that's got to be a big part of the management.
That's true.
So we got that, we've got an annual evaluation, we'll have to go into an executive session about that for Mr. Singleton's. I think we got that, and then do we want to do that before?
Let's go to old business.
The old bit, oh, you want to.
Yeah, because I actually amended the.
Okay.
Yeah.
Trustee duties, so what?
Yeah, so I just wanted, I wanted to make a motion to appoint Mr. Johnson to the supervisor for the board of trustees starting immediately. I think he should take over the office.
What, what? I'm a, a supervisor for the board of trustees.
Well, take, I mean, meaning that I think, I want, I want to make a motion for Jeff to take over the office. Start being the supervisor over the office.
Does zoning and secretary?
Yeah, correct, that's correct.
Okay, when you say board, I didn't know if you had precedent.
No, 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 don't worry, nobody's going to take your presidential job.
I'm trying.
You were just saying to make, give it over to Jeff, that he will become the supervisor. It's, it's not complicated, you're making it complicated.
Your words were not clear.
Okay, what part wasn't clear?
All of them.
Sorry, I'll just reword it. I am make a motion for Mr. Johnson to become the supervisor of the office staff, meaning zoning Mr. Singleton as well as Lord.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion? I think that's inappropriate, like we discussed prior with all the changes. You were on record that John, Mr. Johnson should not be.
It doesn't matter if I was on record, Mark, it doesn't matter.
So what changed?
A lot of things have changed, we're seeing it, all changes going on every day. We're seeing the stuff out on social media, we're seeing changes every day, every single day.
Okay.
You're complaining about you can't get your job done, your work from your business, you finally got to work this week, which is great. I'm glad to hear good report that you got to go to work this week or last week.
So again, my issue with that is when I came into this office, Mr. Johnson, I, we just made a comment about the email system that is deficient, it's not properly recorded. You said, well, we can't just change everything. We need to change things. And you're suggesting putting an individual that doesn't want to change things in charge. I think that's inappropriate, that's, again, you, it doesn't seem like you want change, and Mr. Johnson doesn't want change. Doesn't think there's anything wrong in the past and, I mean, you guys can do whatever you want, but it's, again, directly opposite of what you said before. That Mr. Johnson should not be in charge of zoning or the secretaries.
Learn as you go along, we're finding out, your biggest complaint is your reason to suffering. We can fix it right now.
You know, that is the least amount of time, what is, and the road crew does a lot. What about the road crew? Because we had discussed prior to taking office that Mr. Johnson was going to, you're going to put him as road crew supervisor because you didn't want to, you didn't want to supervise any employees. Why not road crew? Just you that?
That's a lie. I want to.
Well, I think that's, again, for the changes needed, that's not the right direction. We should get a proper administrator to do that, but again, Mr. Johnson's a nice person, but he's got a track record of 14 years. Again, that room is 14 years of how this township is operated. We don't have working files, we don't have, and I don't believe Mr. Johnson is going to implement. Any of that is going to be status quo. And I can't believe you support that. What did you run, change?
Yeah, you're right, and I can't believe that you go on social media and do what you do.
I, I call, I believe you.
I can't believe that, Mark, I cannot believe.
If.
Call, let's call for, let's, let's, let's.
You're going to call for the questions? All right, roll call please.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Mrs. McKee?
Yes.
All right. Uh, we'll do trustee comments and announcements. Do you guys have any comments or announcements?
Yeah, I have comments. My comments are, we are a board and we're new here and we're learning, but we have to respect each other. My comments are, we are a board and we're new here and we're learning, but we have to respect each other. I've heard several residents come to that podium and say that. But it's the way you're condescending conversation to Mr. Johnson and to myself, it's not going to get us moving down the line. You, you know, remember, remember, we are all in this together. We want to make the township a better place to live. And if we're just belittling each other and being condescending, it's not getting anywhere. And it's all public, everything, you got your newspaper here, you're reporting us, which you started the recording at 5:30, which immediately doesn't start until 6:00. I'm not sure why you started at 5:30. But now here it is 10 after 10. We didn't have to stack this, we have a meeting coming up, a second meeting in a couple of weeks. We could have divided this up, here it is after 10, people have to go home. I mean, this is, this is, this is overkill. I don't know why we had to put all this on, on this agenda tonight, it makes no sense. But again, it was what you wanted, Mark, that's what this is all about, what Mark wants. It's not about us as a board, it's about what Mark wants. Same stuff that you accused Mr. Carlisle, you're doing it. And it has to stop, we cannot operate like this. I'm willing to extend an olive branch to you. I'm willing to spin an olive branch to Mr. Johnson. That's how you negotiate on a board and work together as a team, not by, that might not be little on your colleague, that's not how it works. That's all I have to say.
Okay, well, I have a lot to say. The first thing I will ask is, will you waive executive privilege regarding your last comments in executive session about your accusation of why I'm acting like this?
What do you mean why you're acting like this?
Will you waive that?
What do you mean by that? No, I'm not, I don't care, you can say what you want to say. I mean, everyone's.
I want to break privilege, but.
What you got to do, Mark, you got to do what you got to do, I have nothing to hide.
I'm speaking, please. I, I'm doing what is right for this township. Every agenda item on here is something we needed to address and they're.
We need a lot of money.
Mrs. McKee, I'm speaking. These are items that are needed. Email systems, there's, I mean, it's so much that the other, you two trustees do not care about. You've not proposed any significant changes. I, I'm the only one here trying to get things right besides our new fiscal officer.
Oh, that's right.
I, please, I'm speaking, I gave you your opportunity. Okay, I have not changed from when I ran for election and what I said I was going to do, proper administration of this township. You have done nothing but attack in private and malign me and call me. It's, I tried and what the defining point was, is when you tried to, again, remove me and place Johnson over the zoning and secretary in violation of what you said before, I thought was inappropriate and that's why I went public. Now, again, I probably could have had another page or two of items that we need to address that this, other board members don't seem to care about. About the IT, about the email, we're getting more and more records requests that we're having a hard time dealing with. We had a capital budget application that was due on 3/18. Did either of you two apply for that? No. Why? I mean, there's so much going on here and you proposed three things on this agenda. Blessing Box is great, it's great for the community, the other one canceled and the mortuary thing. However, I'm trying to do what is right for this township, support our employees. You say you have the skills to deal with the email, but you won't because you don't want to spend your time. I've spent the last four months and I've worked two days out of that for my business. And I actually should be doing that again tonight. It's, I don't understand your actions and, like I said, I've tried to work behind scenes. There was an individual here tonight that was trying to get you and I to work together and you told him to stop getting us to work together.
That's not true, you told that.
That's what he said.
I never said that.
That's what he said.
That's not true, I'm not that, that, I'll work with people, that's why I, that's my whole career.
Well, excuse me, excuse me.
So, that's not true, Mark.
Excuse me. So, I'm trying to do what's right. If you want status quo, if you want to join with Mr. Johnson, who was part of the proper administration of the past, that's fine. And again, he's a good man in private, he, he wasn't doing what's right for this township and still isn't. He's excusing actions, even the fiscal officer with attesting to receiving stuff, he didn't. That's improper, we've got to be better than that. And all these, there's not one item that isn't important either to the community or us. And I'm trying to get us to at least obey the law in many respects. So, you can continue to support Carlisle ever more of everything, but the residents did not vote for that. And I will continue to fight for the residents and for this township regardless of the other trustees. But I'm going to abide by my promises to these residents.
Okay, I just have one question.
I, I'm.
Where's the criminal activity that you keep putting out there on, on social media?
Or secret.
No, they want the letter and you, within 15 minutes that letter was sent to us, you had it out on social media. Yeah, the letter from, yes, Budget Manager, you stuck it out there. It's out there, everybody saw it.
That's not what I'm talking about, I'm talking about strategic transition.
I'm not talking about that.
I made myself aware in the last three months of many of the operations of this township, okay? I don't need to kind of ramp up anymore, do anything that stuff. These are the things that we need to do and I'm being hampered. You guys can vote me for anything, but it's going to be a detriment to this township. Approving contracts that we don't even have in front of us, it's just more impropriety, you know, it's just wrong. So, I had other questions on the trustee comments of where things are, like SWPP plan and all that, but that's kind of insignificant now. So, I'm done, does Mr. Johnson have anything? There you go. All right, well, I will move, or, actually, we've got, she's still there, Fiscal Officer report, make the quick report.
I don't have anything with regard to finances, but I would like to remind everybody that we did approve Fidesz and Icam to helping for a certain amount of hours. And that will immediately go away with any kind of contract with Bill Vance.
Okay.
We have the most intelligent fiscal officer available to us and we get extremely great help from her. We have an audit coming up, a single year audit. We have still to have to defend the rest of the CARES Act funds that we received, up to $775,000 that will have to be paid back.
Talking to me or you're talking to that?
I'm talking to all of you. I have been in here every weekend for two months and many, many evenings. I don't get to choose not to deal with the Office of Budget and Management. It's $700,000 of money that the residents of this township will have to pay back. Keep that in mind as you move forward swiftly with Bill Vance.
That is my concern. I think we need to continue supporting her and to get out of this mess. She's putting a lot of effort, especially the issue of not being able to remote in which we need to fix the meeting. So. A move for a motion to pay bills and prove purchase orders as presented, is there a second?
A second.
All right. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
All right, and I'll move to go into executive session for employee evaluation under ORC 121.22G1 to consider the annual evaluation for Mr. Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
And we are in executive session at 10:19. You're back on. All right, I'll make a motion to come out of executive session, is there a second?
Second.
Johnson's second, roll call, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yep.
We're out at 10:32 PM. I'd like to move to the new business, you, employee evaluation. Mr. Singleton, thank you for your high years of service so far. So. Appreciate that and good to see you back in the office too. We discussed everything and I would like to make a motion to, let me get here. I'll make a motion to increase the pay of John Singleton, our zoning inspector, to an annual salary of $53,575. Is there a second?
A second.
All right, discussion? No. Again, thank you for your service. And roll call, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
All right, and I will move to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. McKee, second, roll call, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Ms. McKee?
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
Sorry. All right, we are adjourned at 10:33. What's that?